Good evening and welcome to the Placerville City Council Meeting for Tuesday, October 13th. We are going to move into closed session, but before we do, is there any member of the public that wishes to make public comments on item one for the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I just see one attendee from the Mountain Democrat and I don't believe he has any comment at this time.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and go move into closed session and we'll be back at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Okay, well, good evening again and welcome to the Tuesday, October 13th meeting of the Placerville City Council. Will everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you, everybody. We're once again trying a new COVID-19 configuration of our city council and was really happy to have some of our staff back with us as well. So, thank you, everybody, for being here and we have some special guests this evening as well. So, with that, we'll go ahead and get started. Regina, can you call roll call, please?
Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We'll move right in to item three and item 3.1, which is the announcement of the Veterans Memorial Garden fundraiser and I believe Councilmember Acuna has this for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was approached recently by John Sanders of Old Town Grill and Sue Rodman and they have graciously arranged a fundraiser for the Veterans Monument Garden. Incorrectly, not as Memorial, Monument Garden. It'll be one of the now becoming the infamous dinners for a cause at the fairgrounds and it will be coming up on Friday, October 23rd from 4:30 to 7:00. John has decided that it would be appropriate to have a gold miners' gold rush style menu for the evening. So, he's gonna start with a small Hanktown fry and salad, then entrees of either gold miner stew or cast iron fried chicken with mashed potatoes, vegetables, and country gravy and a personal dessert. So, the funds raised will go towards helping move the Monument Garden project along. The Monument Garden is that garden that is there at Bedford and Main Street and basically what we've gotten done to date is the Vietnam veterans portion of it and there is, or there are several additional improvements that want to go in along the Bedford Street side of the park. Kathy Lishman has been a longtime proponent of this and when I was approached, I thought it would be a perfect opportunity to kind of jumpstart that program and hopefully get some new interest and hopefully some new, maybe some donations of materials and plants and so on. So, again, that's this Friday, the 23rd, 4:30 to 7:00 and big thanks to John and the folks at Old Town Grill and the folks at the fairground that helped make these possible. We will have a flyer out tomorrow.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Does anybody, do you know if anyone was calling in on this as well or?
Nothing I'm aware of, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and we'll open it up for any, for public comment in case anyone's calling in on this issue.
I'm sure there'll be an article in the paper.
I would think so.
Certainly, all the promotion we can get.
If you'd like to speak for public comment on item 3.1, use the star nine option to raise your hand or if you're joining by computer, just use the raise hand option at the bottom of your screen.
This Friday? Next Friday. There is the, this Friday, I believe, is a dinner for the banner.
Mr. Mayor, we'll hear from 206965.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to voice my support for this. I think it's a great idea to have to move along with our little veterans memorial garden and get that thing finished. So, that's where this is coming from. Thank you. Bye.
All right. Thank you, Sue, and thank you for your work as well.
Last call for public comment on item 3.1, the Veterans Memorial Garden fundraiser.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask the clerk to correct the minutes from the meeting that it should correctly reflect Monument Garden fundraiser. My, my error. I apologize.
Noted, Councilmember Acuna. Mr. Mayor, there are no further public comments.
Okay, thank you, Regina.
Thank you, Mayor Clark.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you think you ought to talk about the dinner? I mean, that it's, they either can drive by and pick it up or?
I'll defer to Mark on the...
Dennis, have you been to?
It's at the, um...
It's at the fairgrounds.
It's at the fairgrounds. It's, yeah.
It should be either or.
Yeah, it'll be on the way.
Do you drive in the, the old way or do you drive, do they have the main gate open or is it right in there in that?
Uh, last, well, the Fridays, because they've been doing the Friday night farmer's markets and they've let people into the front gate.
The Fri- okay.
For those, like probably the same way. Last time I went around to the back, it was, it was locked. So, um, maybe...
The fairgrounds will have it on their social media, as will John, and we will too. And it'll have the...
Fantastic.
Yep.
And you can also make a donation if you're not able to partake of the dinner.
Okay.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mark. Looking, looking forward to it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
So, we'll move on and go to item 3.2, which is a receiving file update on public records requests and Ms. McConnell has this for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, there were two recent public records requests. We had the Wapoomnas tribe requested on September 16th, all records emails regarding the four initiatives and the one referendum that they have circulating. That one was responded to last week. And then we have the one from Max Del Real from Trees Cannabis and he requested on September 18th, all records emails, et cetera, communication about cannabis, about the cannabis application selection process. That one is still pending. We anticipate having that responded to and completed by the end of this week. There were two public records requests received yesterday, Monday. One from Jeffrey Long McGee and he requested the form that officers and staff use at the police department to utilize, sorry, to document the use of force incidents and that was responded to today. So, that is complete. There's also one from Todd Madison who was requesting the 2019 employee compensation report and that also has been responded to. So, we just have one outstanding report at this time and that's from Max Del Real, which we should have responded to this week. So, if that is all, let me know if you have any questions. I'd be happy to help answer them.
Great. Thank you, Regina. Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up for a public comment.
Public comment is now open for item 3.2, the update on the public records requests. I see no public comments, Mr. Mayor. Oh, sorry, there is one from caller 846. Go ahead.
Good evening.
846, go ahead and unmute yourselves.
Oh, I'm so, I just figured it out. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. I just wanted to say, this is Jennifer Chapman Claystreet. I just wanted to say that I, um, I will be doing a public records request and I totally appreciate, you know, Kara's comments, you know, about, she made the comment and I appreciate she met with us briefly about the Highway 50 alternatives topic with the Transportation Commission, but this just has to do with, I guess, emails that came in regarding some barricading on, on the West Lane for Clay Street associated with, you know, managing this Apple Hill weekend phenomenon right now at this time of year. And so, I guess I just wanted to say it'll be a public records request. I had, I had intended already to submit it and I didn't, but I do, I do really appreciate that you guys are so responsive on these public records requests. So, thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer.
All right. Last call for item 3.2, public records request update. No further comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Regina, and thank you for the report. We'll move ahead to item 3.3, which is the receiving files of September police report and Chief Ren has this for us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's good to see you all in one little box right there. I don't have to look for you guys. It's all over the computer screen. Thank you and good evening, staff and community. This is, what's before you is the September comparison, 2019-2020 Police Department Dispatch Investigations and Patrol Statistics. Again, we've, we're busy year over year, but month over month. For this year, we've maintained a pretty consistent level. We're at about 1,920 calls for service last month, an increase from 1,871 last month. Probably the most significant increase that we're seeing is our investigative caseload. Last year detectives were at about 61 open cases. Now, they're at 89 open cases. So, our men and women are staying busy. They're still responding to any requests for service that the community has, but they were working them. Some of the other stuff that I want to bring up is, so the statistics there before you is just a summary of what we're, we're doing, but I know there's been some question in the community wanting to know a little bit more information. If they look on our website, the placervillepd.com website, the city website with the police page, on the left-hand side, they'll see a menu with crime logs. They can, they can look at that and it gives a kind of a deeper dive into what some of the calls that our officers are responding to. In the last council meeting, somebody had referenced an incident on Main Street where windows were broken. That was just on the media log. We did make an arrest. Person was charged with five felony counts of vandalism. Some of the other stuff that we've been doing on Police Department besides the, just the calls for service, recently we had the National Night Out event. We also, the Police Department also led to cleanup operations in homeless camps to include one prohibited area, which was underneath the bridge, Placerville Drive and Peroz. We cleaned and abated that with help from our Public Works team. So, I appreciate Nick and his crew. This past weekend, there was also a cleanup operation on Broadway. There was mention made this past week about piles of garbage and bags. That's what was cleaned up. We're just waiting for the removal at this point. So, a lot of movement in the Police Department. We've had new hires and promotions and other than that, we're, we're here for you. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Any questions at this time for the chief? Chief, I have one. On the, on the cleanups, the two homeless camps, any, were those strictly cleanups? Did, do we do like, like any sweeps when we're doing that in terms of if people have, whether it's weapons or anything else, any arrests, anything like that during these?
You know, we're routinely checking those areas and enforcing, you know, crime codes to include our, our city ordinances. So, those are done on a routine basis. You know, part of the enforcement effort is also an outreach effort to try to provide services to folks who, who want to break the cycle of homelessness. So, we have, we have routine contact with, with that population. So, yeah, we do the sweeps, we do the enforcement stuff, but we're also there for outreach resources and, and trying to, trying to get that population to pull themselves out of it.
Got it. And I, from the last time, is our, our sex registrant, is that kind of holding at that same higher number than, than usual, I would assume, with the releases from state prison? We're getting more of those?
We're holding at the, we're holding at the same level, but we are running into in the transient camps, persons who have been recently released from state prison and are either on PRCS or state parole. So, it is adding to the, it is adding to the transient population right now.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Acuna.
Thank you, Mr. Chief. Thank you, Chief, for always a good report. Question on the camps, as fire season is about to double down on itself again, how are we doing this year with illegal camp fires?
We've issued several citations for violation of the new city ordinance regarding open fires. We send a team of officers out once a week specifically to address that issue. That's a commitment of ours at the Police Department while we are in a fire season. So, we're, we're active in the enforcement and education aspect with that specific population.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, Councilmember Borelli.
Chief, I know this sounds like a ridiculous question, but I don't know any other way to ask it. When you give a citation to these folks who have nothing, et cetera, et cetera, what good does it do? What's the follow-up? Does it, if they have more than one citation then, does it add up or?
Yes, oftentimes it will. They may not, the district attorney's office may not prosecute on the, on the first offense, but if there's an accumulation, then we can put a package together, request prosecution. So, there's some sort of accountability at the, at the end of the, you know, at the end of the line here. You're right, there's, I mean, we can't find them civilly. So, we have to hold them criminally accountable.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I will say, so, when I worked for Governor Schwarzenegger back in 2005, I was in, I had the oversight for the Corrections Department, lucky me, and at the time, we had 160,000 prisoners in our statewide correction system. Today, we have 97,000. I can tell you, not all of them just returned to the good graces of being in society, along with Prop 47 and 57 has also, if you look at those numbers and the decrease in our prison system and those two initiatives, you'll see a corresponding correlation in our increase in homelessness as well. Because a lot of those people that had drug and alcohol addiction, mental health issues, were able to get that help in our correctional system. That's not the case anymore, especially with crimes that used to be felonies that are now misdemeanors and misdemeanors that are essentially fix-it tickets now. So, something for, for us all to remember as we look at things here. Okay, any other questions or comments? We'll go ahead and open it up for public comment.
All right. Public comment is open for item 3.3, the September police report. We'll go ahead and start with Jonathan Gainsborough. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Jonathan.
Good evening, Mayor Michael and Council and Chief Ren. First of all, positive, if you have not seen the transient newspaper, you can Google that and there's a very nice article by Frenchie Hughes about the cooperation of the police with the cleanup. And so, I'm really grateful for that. Anything positive in a dark picture is always, is always light, hopefully leading to more light. I, talking with some of the homeless this week, one told me, and I'm a little puzzled, so maybe Chief Ren can help clarify for me and for you all and for the community and for the homeless. He told me that he had gotten a trespassing citation on the hill, which of course, we, we put the, we put the pause on the really unconstitutional anti-camping ordinance that was passed last January because of Martin Boise and we didn't want to get into, into the weeds with litigation and et cetera. So, I remember the, you saying, Mayor Saragosa, that really we cannot, we cannot bring them or trespass citation them out of their camps unless legally we have provided beds for them. So, my question is, hopefully that's still the attitude of John DiAgostini and Chief Ren. When I hear the word sweeps, I know there were several citations given for people that have warrants out, but I just want to clarify, are we not citationing them for trespassing on the hill, which would be unconstitutional and cause trouble that we don't really want? So, that, it's the word sweeps not dealing with trespassing on the homeless, because that's something that God has just called me to go to the wall and go to the mat on if we have to and I don't believe we have to. So, just some clarification on that if we could from Chief or from, for you all and for the rest of us.
Thank you, Jonathan.
All right. Last call on item 3.3, the September police report. No further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Regina. Chief, any final comments?
Yeah, in regards to Mr. Gainsborough's comments, I'm not familiar with that specific case, but if somebody is receiving a citation for trespassing, it's more likely because they were on private property, on public property. We're not enforcing camping ordinances and that's as a direct result of the CDC guidelines and Governor Newsom's orders. So, but those, those orders don't apply on private property. So, private property owner, if somebody's trespassing, setting up an illegal encampment, that private property owner can request us to come in and, and remove the subjects. If they, if they felt to remove from the area, then they would in turn be issued a citation for trespassing at that point.
Thank you, Chief, for that clarification. Okay, and thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item 3.4.
Mayor, excuse me?
Yes, yes.
Can, could we move to item 6.2? We have some guests here and one may need to leave him. Would it be possible to switch to that now and then to?
6.1?
6.1, excuse me.
Yep. Yes, absolutely. No, all right.
No objections.
No objections? Okay. So, we're gonna make a quick detour to item six, which are ceremonial matters and item 6.1, which is to acknowledge our recently retired employees who have served our great city. And with that, I will turn it over to Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Really wanted to, this is somewhat of a bittersweet because we are losing a lot of knowledge with these retirements that are happening and, and wanted to really take the opportunity to express our appreciation to these employees who have chosen to retire at this time. We have only two of them tonight. The others chose not to be here or couldn't make it. I'm not sure all the reasons, but anyway, they're not here tonight. So, we will present that to them. But tonight, we have with us that we will start with Mark Yvani from our Engineering Department and Brian Simkins from Public Works. So, if I could at this time, I'll turn the time over to Rebecca Neese and invite her to come up to speak first regarding Mark Yvani and then we'll go from there.
Good evening. So, the city has been lucky to have Mr. Yvani with us for 20 years in our Engineering Department as our engineering technician and our GIS guru. Mark has created the first real GIS versions of our facilities map and we've been building on them ever since as we continue to find little surprises in town and platter locations as we affectionately refer to them. But in our dated efforts, that has been an important part of our ability to improve our beautiful city. Mark has, he's been a master of the profession. Mark will always care for the customer, the ambassador of the person. There was never a day he wasn't eager to help a customer, a member of staff, or any stranger that came along. His jovial demeanor is rare and is always appreciated. He's the kind of person that can make you feel like you've known him your whole life in about the first 15 minutes of a conversation. He has a public servant through and through, extending grace when it was needed. He always had a joke to lighten the tense mood and he always showed up with unwavering kindness. In my mind, Mark was the one who trained me. Mark knows where everything is and he remembers the history of all of it as it unfolded during his tenure. Mark, I'm keeping your phone around speed dial, buddy. You can't possibly know the void that's been left with your absence in the office and in our city hall. Our city staff functions like a little family and I will always cherish the chats you and I had. You might be one of the bravest people I know. Thank you, Mark, for showing up every single day with the very best version of yourself. Thank you for the many years of dedication and service. Thank you for being a part of our engineering family, our city family. And congratulations on your retirement. I can't wait to see you about in your new mansion.
Okay. Thank you. So, Mark, if you would come up, please. We have the ultimate certificate we give, which, congratulations to you on your retirement for your service. If you notice Council in the report, you have the list of number of years Mark has been with us, over 20 years.
Yeah, a little over that.
And then also, we have, it's been our tradition for employees to retire with 20 years of service with the city, a city watch with the city seal on, on the face of the watch. So, Mark, you have your watch. I'm sure you wear it every day. I don't know your, but yeah. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mark. I guess I'm not supposed to shake hands.
Elmo to Elmo.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you, please. Any commentary wants to move on or?
Yeah, we can, unless we want to, we can do them at the, at the end, yeah.
All right. So, next is Brian Simkins. Hopefully, most of you know Brian Simkins. Brian gets the award on the list. As you can see, Brian has been with us for over 31 years. I don't know how that works. 31 years, I can't imagine. Anyway, I've, I've been in the business for about 31 years, but I haven't been all in one, one place, but I...
Just kept telling him no.
I commend you for that, Brian, and it's a great accomplishment. So, with that, I'll turn it over to his supervisor, Nick Stone. Nick, if you would, please speak this way if you can, so that hopefully this phone will pick you up. It's not picking you up very well. So, anyway, just speak loud.
Yeah, for everybody that doesn't know, Brian's been a meter reader. He's also had a few other positions within the city before he came back for the past 31 years. Something that I've always wondered is... If, if they had a fit bit 31 years ago, how many steps you would have taken? One of those rounds walking laps around the city for 31 years would, would just blow my mind. The knowledge that Brian's, that Brian has and the resource that he's been able to be for, for some of the younger guys, I know that, me personally, I've been able to call him on a weekend and say, hey, I'm at 123 Canal Street. Where's the meter? Because it's buried under, there's three German Shepherds and it's behind some Oleanders or something like that. And Brian knows exactly where it's at and we've been able to call him and ask any of those questions anytime. He's, he's gonna be really missed in the Public Works Department. I mean, everybody, since you've been gone, you know, just, just the past few days, everybody saw the impact of, of you not being there. Luckily, I'm now Brian's neighbor, so I get to live across the road from him. So, still get to see him on a weekly basis. So, I'm looking forward to that. I'm sorry, I didn't have a better speaker or anything like that for him, but it's been a day. So...
All right, Brian, come on up. Again, I think, hopefully Brian's trained his, the person that's taken over for him well, because I know there are a lot of meters out there that, he, he knows if you, if there's anybody that you needed to know something about the city, a street or where it is or probably even... something about the city, a street, or where it is, or probably even a house on the street, Brian knows it. He can, he can tell you where that's at. So Brian, let me make sure I got the right certificate. Congratulations to you, and there's your, your watch also. Appreciate.
Thank you very much, yeah.
It's been great, and hopefully we'll see you around once in a while, too.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be around. Definitely. It's been, it's been great working with everybody and, uh, great group of people. Um, couldn't have had a better career, you know, and better people. Thanks.
All right. All right, next, um, I would like to move into, uh, we'll go into the Finance Department. And, and again, um, for, for these, as, as I mentioned, we, they're not here, uh, but we do want to recognize them also, and then we will get their, 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 uh, certificates to them. So.
Can I make one comment before?
Sure, yes.
Yeah.
Before they, yeah.
And, and Brian, over, uh, for Brian Simkins, um, I have had over the years occasions to have you once with me, help me with our, our, our city water in that you detected leaks that I didn't know were going on, just by being a, have been, you know, people can look at a meter and move on, but you look at a meter and you, and you, you do, you take it a step further. And you have done that, and I've heard that from other people too, where you have identified leaks and even backtracked to see if it's, if it's just a small leak, or had paid attention to, uh, the health, the, the health and of our water system, and especially, uh, the people that live in the city. And I've, I've heard comments from other people as well, as I, as I have had the experience of you actually catching a leak on my property, I wasn't, wasn't aware. And, and that doesn't, you know, people that care like that, they don't come along always, and, and I think that our city is immensely, uh, appreciative of the care that you have given each individual house that you have, that you have visited, and the attention that you have paid for, for the people of this community. So with that, I, as a representative, I want to thank you on behalf of them. I know that they may not always know what you do, and see what you do, and understand the significance, and it's not just reading a meter, and, and it's not just doing all the other things you've done. It, it's actually you care. And so with that, I, I, I will express my appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. I, I did enjoy the customer services. One of my favorite parts of the job, just working with people and solving problems.
Well, thank you.
You will be missed, that is for sure.
Anybody else while they're here? Any comments before they extend maybe?
Well, I, I would just echo Vice Mayor Thompson's comment, that both Mark and Brian, tremendous institutional knowledge will walk out that door here in just a couple minutes. And I don't doubt that Rebecca and Nick will have you on speed dial for a little while. And I'm sure also that you will be happy to answer those questions, which really speaks to the character and dedication that you have both shown for, for decades to the citizens of the city. And, you know, being able to be that go-to person has, has been a real asset to everybody that you work with and everybody that you come in contact with also. And so I would just like to say, you know, I have seen Brian out, out on a, on a meter reading route in the morning, and oh, there he is up doing his thing. In the afternoon, he's down flagging traffic, got a water pipe that's blowing up out of the ground. And he's not just a meter reader, is he? So appreciate your willingness to always step in, and the same thing with Mark and you're, uh, having that role and knowing where it's at and where it was in the Plasterville specials. Thank you very much for keeping, trying to move that into the electronic world, which is not an easy thing to do. And I have always admired your, your willingness to take on the latest and put this whole town on that overlay. So thank you very much for your contribution.
Thank you, yeah. Likewise, I mean, I know you've also saved my, I've had the leak in my house. Well, this was way before I was on City Council or involved in anything. You were out of my house, and, um, I wasn't there, but my wife was, and we figured out the leak, and it was great. It wasn't a big one, but we were still wasting water. So we appreciate, you know, everything that you've done, uh, Mark and Brian, for all the work that you've done for the city. It's true, the Plasterville surprises, we just had one on Spring Street, um, you know, and so that as we move forward, we actually have documentation and the ability to understand where all these things are at. So thank you for that. In 20 and 31 years, that's, that is a lot of knowledge, a lot of dedication that's gonna be walking out this door. So for that, you will be sorely missed. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's almost unheard of nowadays for people to put in that type of time into a single organization. And so, uh, you have my utmost respect for, for doing that and for working for our citizens here in town. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, good, all right.
Thank you. You're absolutely welcome to stay, but you don't have.
Yeah, you don't, you don't, we're not running you out.
Yeah.
I'm not really up on my current events more.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
See you later. Thank you.
Ready for you.
Thanks, Brian. Really appreciate it. Thanks, Mark.
Have a makeup.
I know.
Okay. We are going to next move into, uh, the Finance Department. We have two people in the Finance Department, and, um, I will invite, uh, Dave Warren to come up. And Dave, I'm gonna put some photos up here for the Council to see, so since they're not here. So we'll start with Kelly Segura. So, Dave?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. I'd like to comment, uh, with Brian Simkins and, um,
Dave, speak as loud as you can.
Oh, sorry about that. Mark Yvani. I had the opportunity to work with them fairly closely, and it was great and glorious. So, um, as you know, the Finance Department is the face of City Hall, and it's imperative that we deliver the highest level of customer service possible for the public on a consistent basis. One of the key factors to achieving high, this high level of customer service is loyal, talented employees such as Kelly Segura, retired accounting supervisor, and Christie Fernandez, retired accounting assistant, too. Um, just to recap, Christie Fernandez began working with the city on November 13, 2000, as an Office Assistant One in the Community Services Department, when she was performing general reception and clerical services at that time. Uh, Christie was promoted as to the Recreation Program Coordinator on January 4, 2003. Then on November 3, 2003, Christie was promoted to the Minister of Secretary, uh, directly supporting Director of Customs Services, Ron Mueller, at that time. Um, then, the Accounting Assistant Two position in the Finance Department became available, and thankfully Christie transferred to the Finance Department in September of 2005, in my capacity. Christie's primary duties included all aspects of accounts payable and employee benefit administration. Uh, for the past 15 years, Christie successfully ensured that she was, uh, were correctly accounted for. She also successfully orientated numerous employees who joined the city's ranks with proper health and welfare benefits and administered the annual open enrollment programs that you have. Um, during the Great Recession, the collection of sewer and water bills and other charges became extremely challenging, uh, and with the flood of foreclosure and bankruptcy notices the city received on an ongoing basis at that time. Uh, Christie quickly came up to speed, uh, with the city's collection policies and procedures, and was instrumental in working with customers who were struggling to pay their bills due to those tough economic times. I owe a huge debt of gratitude to Christie for the fine work she's done, uh, for the Finance Department and the city. And unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight, but, um, um, there's a lot to celebrate. So, uh, Kelly Segura began working for the city in October of 2000 as an Accounting Assistant One, performing general reception, cashiering, accounts receivable support. Um, due to her stellar performance at that time, Kelly was promoted to an Accounting Assistant Two on January of 2003. And then in September of 2005, Kelly was promoted to Accounting Supervisor, and her primary duties included managing general reception, administering all accounts receivable, including sewer and water charges, business license, and other standards. Um, as the Accounting Supervisor, Kelly was my right-hand person in dealing with some of the most complex and challenging collection situations that at times would end up with establishing payment plans, customers being referred to a collection agency, and having to place liens on property, or going to small claims court, which is very draining. Um, but she took it in stride. Kelly always upheld the golden rule, treating customers as she wanted to be treated with the utmost respect and dignity. She was tough, but very fair. Uh, Kelly was my confidante in a great sounding, um, she obtained her notary certification, which saved the city thousands of dollars by not having to outsource notarized documents. Um, during her tenure, Kelly, uh, discovered numerous properties, for whatever reason, were not being billed sewer and water charges, that brought additional revenues into the city's coffers. One point I'd like to make is in 2005, we were very, was a very challenging time for the Finance Department. We had 50% turnover in staff. We converted to a new financial software. We changed our sewer billing structure from a flat rate to a commodity, uh, rate. We established and implemented a new account code structure, and we moved to the new City Hall, all in that one year. And, um, our first day at the City Hall on Center Street, we were only closed for four hours while that, that was all going on. Kelly was instrumental in assuring that all these major changes were completed successfully. So like Christie, I owe a huge debt of gratitude to Kelly for the fine work she's done. And, um, I'd just like to thank Kelly and Christie for all they've done for the Finance Department and the city, and I do miss them, working in both of those. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
And, and I apologize, um, because I didn't put, uh, Christie up there. So let me, let me quickly do that. Maybe Dave can explain this picture. If I can find it here. There's, there's Christie.
(laughing)
I think that maybe it's her retirement.
Christie's, that was, uh, her last workday.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Anyway.
It was a celebration of the Finance Department, so, thank you.
Again, both of them will be missed in the, in the Finance Department, granted. So, yeah. Um, with that, I think that I will call Rebecca back up to speak to. She has two more employees in her department, Celeste Wilson, who was her Administrative Secretary, and Brett Stone, uh, Engineering Specialist. Which one would you like to start with?
I'll offer Brett.
Brett?
Yeah.
Brett has a nice picture also, fits with our, our wonderful infrastructure, and Brett at work.
Yeah, that was on, uh, that's on Mosquito Road. We found a storm drain that had been a little worse for the wear. Um, so it seems like we were actually just here to honor Brett. He celebrated his 15-year tenure with us just this last year. So you may remember from, uh, December he was here. Brett has been the city's inspector for all things engineering, and prior to that, he was an inspector for Elrod County in the Department of Transportation. And man, does he have some good stories. Brett is the guy you could call or text, um, anytime you needed something to be checked out on a moment's notice. You know, hey, can you go check this out and let me know what's going on? He would drop everything and report back with photos. It could be anything. A purple elephant on Main Street, he had the scoop. In the last several years, he's been a key role in delivering the construction of city CIP projects such as the Sierra Tank Bypass, Chanel School Road Pressure Reducing Station, and most recently, the Mosquito Road Project Utility Improvements, which is still wrapping up construction right now. Brett is all heart, and I can honestly say he had a very difficult job in the field representing the city. Anyone that's ever worked in an active construction zone knows, not everyone's really happy to see you. We're understanding that you're trying to improve infrastructure and roads, which may mean we need to turn your water off for a day. But the inspectors often get the brunt of it. They have some great stories and some pretty sizable battle scars, too. Brett was able to take it in stride. I'm sure he counted to a million often. But his ability to shake things off made him able to stay focused on serving the city and our community for the greater good. Um, to Brett, thank you for being our eyes and our ears in the field, for bearing the uncomfortable moments, and for showing up and doing your very best every day. Congratulations on your retirement. Looking forward to catching up with you over Sandwich at Meltzer's. So, and then for Celeste Wilson. Sure. You can see, she's already glowing with happiness.
She's happy.
(laughing) In an office, there's always one person that seems to be the glue that keeps everyone's nonsense together and helps the whole place run smoothly. Celeste was definitely that person for engineering. There wasn't a task she didn't take on, even if she had no idea what it was or even how to do it. She would just go and figure it out. You may have noticed that Plasterville's become proficient in funding projects with multiple funding sources, sorry, Dave. And while each funding source and its expenditures is tracked down to the penny with applicable contracts, and often with multiple contracts on each project, somehow Celeste could keep it all straight. Since she's been gone, we've said on a nearly daily basis, man, I miss Celeste. It wasn't just her mad fin, uh, funding tracking skills or her ability to hunt someone down when she needed an answer. Celeste had a pulse on everyone. Even in times of her own trials and tribulations, she could be kind even when someone wasn't. And she had such a calm energy about her, and she's so graceful. Not to mention, she has the cutest baby in our city family, but we all might be a little biased since Aris is also part of our city family. Celeste, as you can see from her beautiful photo, is enjoying retirement, enjoying her two beautiful grandbabies now. She got a new one this year during the pandemic, so she's, uh, eager to spoil and, and love on her new grandbaby. And I'm sure Aris and Patrick appreciate it, too. Um, thank you, Celeste, for just being your wonderful self and for helping us carry the workload in every way you could, and for being the one who always noticed. You are a diamond.
Thank you. With that, I am going to, uh, ask Joe Wren to join us. It looks like he's there. And, um, we have two, as you can see, Police Department. Uh, Joe, do you have a preference which one you would like to start with?
I, I, do we have pictures?
Two.
(laughing) It's a good thing you're putting them up, because, uh, you know, when you're not at the dinner table, you're on the menu. That's kind of the police department.
There you go.
Um, we'll do Ron first.
Okay.
He was the first to, uh, to make it out the door. Um, Ron Cannon, definitely a fixture at the Plasterville Police Department. Um, I think he started somewhere around 1854 when the city was,
(laughing)
Uh, he's gonna kill me. I haven't had a chance to miss, uh, Ron and Kim, because I, I call and text them frequently, so, um, I miss seeing them, though. Uh, when you're a member of a police department, you're, you're more than just an employee. Uh, you're, you're a member of a family. We experience, um, uh, you know, good times and, and bad. And when we laugh together, we cry together. Uh, so when, when anybody leaves, uh, Ron, Ron spent 24 years at the Plasterville Police Department. He retired on September 4. During his, uh, time with us, he held just about every special assignment there was to hold within the Police Department. He was a canine handler, a SWAT team member, a range master, a detective, and a sergeant. Um, Ron, uh, was a, was a source of, of everything, uh, Plasterville when it came to historical knowledge. Um, I, geez, I do miss him. He was, uh, a fantastic guy. Uh, Ron was looking forward to retirement, uh, so it couldn't have come at a better time for him. He's an avid Jeep-er, who often can be found up on the Rubicon, and also takes trips to Moab, uh, to spend time with, uh, his, uh, wife, banging around on the Jeep around there. So, uh, Ron's missed. I, I talked to him today. Sorry, couldn't make it, but he had a previous engagement. Um, you, you're not gonna, you know, if you, if you're out and about early in the morning, Ron's easy to find. He's usually sitting in front of a cup of coffee in the brightest shirt that he has in his wardrobe. So, um, stop by, say hi, thank him for his years of service, and, uh, just a pleasure to, to, to be around. And, and I do miss Ron. So, we can go to Kim next.
Thanks, Joe. So we actually have two of Kim. I'll, I'll put up here for you. So I'll start with, um, this one, and it's a little small, so that's why I have two, but...
Okay. Um, okay, Kim and I, um, you know, Kim and I, uh, she was the second person at Plasterville Police Department that I met, that I met, um, when I came up here in 2016. I met her actually as I was scouting out the Police Department, and I, I pulled her aside, and, um, I said, hey, you got, you got any advice? I mean, is there anything you care to share? And in true Kim fashion, she said, just don't be an idiot.
I'll start with this one, and it's a little small, so that's why I have two, but...
Okay. Okay, Kim Nida. You know, Kim and I, uh, she was the second person at Placerville Police Department that I met, that I met when I came up here in twenty sixteen. I met her actually as I was scouting out the police department, and I, I pulled her aside, and I said, hey, you got, you got any advice? I mean, is there anything you care to share? And in true Kim fashion, she said, just don't be an idiot. I, I hope I, I lived up to not be an idiot in her eyes. Kim has a long and distinguished career. After twenty-six years in law enforcement, she retired on September thirtieth. Kim started her career with the Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office as deputy sheriff. From there, she moved to El Dorado County Sheriff's Office, and then about thirteen years ago, we got her here in Placerville Police Department. During her time in the business, she was involved in field training, investigations, mentoring program, youth activities. She was promoted to lieutenant, and then subsequently elevated to the position of commander. She was instrumental in our outreach efforts, you know, bridging the gap between the community and police department. She truly was, when you hear about somebody being the face of an organization, she, she was the face of our organization. Kim is very much looking forward to retirement. I asked her what she was doing tonight, and she says, I'm enjoying my retirement. I don't know what that means, but I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's something fun. You know, as we threw a party for, for both Kim and, and Ron when they were leaving, and I asked Kim, I said, what's next? You're too young to just hang it up. And she says, I keep getting asked that, and I don't know how to tell people that I'm not gonna do nothing for a while. I'm gonna just do nothing for, for about six months. And she's definitely earned it. She enjoys spending time with her family, and she can often be found out on the lake paddle boarding. So to Kim and Ron, you know, they're, they're members of our family. And while we're happy to see them transition into the next chapter of their life, they are gonna be missed, because like I said, we spend so much time together. And I'm glad they haven't changed their phone number yet, because I still bug them from time to time.
Thank you, Joe. With that, I'm, I'm gonna, since Kim can't hear to, isn't here to arrest me if I do it, I'm gonna put up one more picture of her that I thought was a neat one that we came up with, so. At first, I looked at, why is she so tall? But they're actually holding her up, if you notice in that picture.
Yeah. That's Kim. That's awesome.
If you know Kim, she's very involved with youth sports, always has been in our community, and, and hopefully will continue to be, so, yeah.
That's great.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Wren. So we have two, two left. However, one of those, Frank Jacoby. Frank is actually on, he's still working. He doesn't, he's not retiring for another month here. And he's on vacation this week is the reason he's not here. So we're gonna hold his off and do it at a, at a future meeting, either our next one or our first meeting in November. So the last one we have is George Spriggs. You can see George on here. I, I don't think, I had Erin collect these pictures for me. I don't think she got me a picture of George. But I'm not sure I need one, because I'm pretty sure that all of you know George well. So I will talk just briefly about George. He will be greatly missed. George is one of those quiet people in the office. I, I very rarely knew what he was doing, or sometimes even where he was, but then all of a sudden, I'd get a text or a call and say, I'm down at Town Hall, or I'm down at the police department, or I'm down at, down at the wastewater plant, or wherever. And he, as you know, our computer systems are extremely vital to what we do, and making sure that he, he kept the glue together and kept, kept our, our computers running was extremely important to the city. I think that probably, I know we have all our department heads, probably any one of them could tell a story that they have with, with George. Mine was that about every morning or every other morning, he would stop by McDonald's and get two breakfast sandwiches, but he only wanted one. I think they were two for three dollars or something. I, I don't know what the deal was.
Such a deal.
He would always come in and say, who wants a breakfast sandwich? I think Regina and Erin will both tell you that they, they enjoyed one on more than one occasion, so. As did I. So George has been great, always, always had an answer when we needed something done. As you know, some of our systems are not state-of-the-art.
Really?
And, and so he's essentially sometimes, as I mentioned, kind of gluing things together and make it work. And George was always able to do that, and he will be missed. He's, he is also in that mode that recently became a grandfather. His son had a baby back in Tennessee, and he went back there at that time, just last month, in fact. And so he's, he's gonna enjoy some time doing that, I think, soon, some traveling, and, and hopefully more, more playing in his band. And so that's the other part, is I'm hoping, and I mentioned to him as he left, that we're, we're counting on him for our employee parties that we can get back to in the future, bringing his band out. He's always been great to do that, and has done a great job. It's been fun having him. Hopefully, and I was gonna announce this later, but I'll mention it. It was interesting, we, we have our new website that we're working on that is close, gonna be, maybe another couple of weeks, we'll be able to break that out to you. And we were surprised the other day, we sent some videos to the website director that's gonna be a, a video that pops up when you open our website now. They are videos of different events, different, of our downtown, it's things that... But they had a video of the fairgrounds, different events going on during fair. And one of the first things that popped up is a band, and there's George playing in the band. We didn't, I didn't realize it until after it came back up on, on there. So he's, he's gonna be on our website for a while also going forward.
Oh, good.
So, uh, we will miss George, and thank you for listening to us tonight and giving us the opportunity, and thanking these great employees. Again, you look at the number of years of service on there, you can see that they will be greatly missed, and we'll, we'll do our best to fill in where those, where those gaps have been created. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Cleve, and thank you to all of our recently retired employees. Okay, we will, I should, I should open it up for, for any public comments on six point one.
A public comment is open for item six point one. The employee retirements. We'll start with caller user two.
Good evening. Caller two, you might be on mute still.
Oops. Sorry about that. That was my, that was my fault. Just as I went to ask him to unmute, he, he was there. So, um, sorry, caller, caller user two. Let's try this again. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, caller two.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I'm, I'm just flabbergasted. I'm looking at this list of retirees, and I'm just thinking, wow, what an incredible group of people. I mean, I, I have good, great stories about so many of these people. It's just amazing. It's, it's really sad for us. Hopefully, it's happy for them. But they're just an amazing group of people. So friendly, so professional, just kudos to all of them, and God bless in the future. That's all.
Thank you, Michael.
Last call for public comment on the employee retirements. No further comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. Okay, then we will go ahead and move back over to item three point four. And this is the September Fire Station Twenty-Five Run Report, and Chief Cordero has it for us tonight. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Within your packet, you'll see the monthly stats for both Engine and Medic Twenty-Five. Both of them actually pretty even last month with their calls, coming in at just shy of eight calls per day. Couple of things I'd like to mention. I'd like to thank the city staff for helping us a couple of weeks ago, getting our annual recertification for our rescue swimmers completed. Normally, this is something that we take, we do in the beginning of the spring, but with COVID, we kind of had to revamp how we were gonna do the process. Our normal application wasn't gonna work. So thank you to the city staff for, for helping us do that. It's something that our rescue swimmers have to do annually. And I believe last month, I reported out to you with the fires in the state, that we had multiple engine companies and overhead folks that were out on assignment. We were able to get those, those folks back as they kind of got a handle on some of those fires. Unfortunately, within about forty-eight hours of them coming back, we sent a couple more engine companies out and some additional overhead to the glass fire and the ZOG fire. And those crews, we still have a couple individuals out, but we do have most of them back at this point. And I'd just really like to acknowledge, you know, when, when those crews go out of county on these various fires throughout the state, you know, they, they work long shifts, you know, they often are sleeping in or under or on the engines. You know, it's a rough go, but often overlooked is the, the crews we had that remain back here. You know, the county locally as a whole, we were pretty stripped there for a while with equipment for our department, just like the rest of them in the county. When we have people that are out on assignment, then the firefighters back home have to pick up the slack and, and fill those shifts. So, you know, we had a lot of guys and gals that staff our equipment that put in a lot of extra hours, a lot of overtime, back-to-back, multiple days, to keep all of our engines and our medic units staffed. And I sort of like tip my hat to, to them, because often they get overlooked for the crews that do go out of county. But it's the ones back home that they really put in that extra work to keep our community safe. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Cordero. Any questions? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Have, can, do you have a sense of the number of fires that we've responded to that are the, what do we call, homeless fires?
You know, I, I don't have that number right off the top of my head, but just from kind of keeping tabs, I think, on things. I believe that the, the work that the PD's doing in the hot team with getting out there and doing the public education, this year seems like it's quite a bit less than, than what we've had in the past years as far as actual dispatches to fires or escape burns in those homeless transient camps.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Mayor, if I could, maybe, and I don't know if, Tim, you're prepared to talk about this, or maybe Chief Wren brought me, mentioned it to me. We did have a fire on Lower Main, I believe, just, was it just last night or the day before? Are you aware of that, or...
Um, I believe there was, it might have been Lower Main. I was thinking it was off of Canal Street, but I can double-check that for you.
Yeah. I heard it was Lower Main and Canal Street. Joe, do you have anything more on that, Chief Wren?
Yeah, it was up on the hill, Tim. Behind, uh, right there. Yeah, it, it looks like it was originally, the initial report was about a fifty-by-fifty spot, ended up being a little bit less than an eighth of an acre. I didn't get the details on the, the cause and origin on that.
Thank you.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Chief. Appreciate it, though.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, any other comments? We'll go ahead and open up for public comment.
Public comment is now open for item three point four, the September Fire Station Twenty-Five Run Report. I see no hands or ears, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. Chief, thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I indulge you one? I, I do have a picture of George. I'll throw up real quick. There you go.
Oh, nice.
Can you enlarge it?
This was, um, I can do a little bit, but it goes blurry when I do that. I can do that bit, so, anyway.
Oh, that's a good one.
That was on his, uh, last day when we had a little party for him, so, anyway. Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, of course. Um, let's see, where are we? Okay, we'll go to brief comments by the city council. Uh, we'll start with the Vice Mayor.
Ooh, you caught me off guard there.
Start three off, sorry.
So, uh, let's see. I attended the El Dorado Opportunity Knox and the COC meeting, and probably one of my key takeaways, I had a few key takeaways from that meeting. The first one was that they have spent well over, or will have spent shortly well over a million dollars in, in housing the otherwise unhoused individuals in our community. And, and what I'm speaking to is the ones that are at high risk, that have been in the hotels that we have rented the rooms for and provided wraparound services, including meals, healthcare, and a variety of other services, including, you know, those services that you have when you're in a home with changes of beds and all those types of things. So they have been, and, and those, um, those medically at-risk individuals have been taken care of. We have had an extremely low, if not, and I don't know how low, because I don't have the exact numbers, but incident of COVID with that population, which is, which is our goal. I believe it could spread rapidly in that group, and they have, in our community, our, our volunteers, our, our county have all, as well as Tahoe Coalition up in Tahoe, have all worked very hard together to, Martin and Twistle at, at Marshall Hospital also has been a huge, um, Marshall Hospital, along with Martin and Twistle, has been a huge support for, for making sure these people stay safe in this current challenge. With that said, you know, we cannot have congregate living, and, and the state will not support or, or will not allow funding to go towards congregate living at this time. That is, um, that is public money. And that's one of the challenges we have going into the season is, one, the city doesn't have a million dollars to spend to house people over the next X number of months, or whatever that number is. As you can tell, it's a large number. And two, finding a, a location or place where you could house them, probably as a public entity with public monies that are the grant fund that goes into the COC. So this is a challenge. I'm not, I'm not saying it's unsurmountable, but this is where the idea of private and nonprofits come in to help support this, this population, and it's a way that the county could help and support those. And that's a whole conversation that's going on in the background right now. I don't know that, how much traction it's getting, and that is an important thing to consider. Which also brings up the next level, is there are several people from this, from this, there's been some positives come out of these people in this environment. One is that they have several people that are available to go into housing, that, that have done, have gone through the steps to, to, to move into housing as, as opposed to going back out into being unhoused or homeless. So, and there's no place for them to go. So we also have a real shortage of housing, which, you know, we hope some of these, these housing programs that we have going will help move those people in that direction and give them opportunities to improve their situation. So we are, so that, you know, those are, those are the two takeaways I, I have from that, and it's important. And, and it helps our community, it helps, uh, it helps everybody if we can help, you know, move these people into a more productive part of our society. So with that, it's kind of, it's kind of frustrating. I attended the Transportation Commission. I think Patty probably will, will talk on that a little bit, maybe? No?
I, I don't, I don't have the...
Oh, there, not a lot happened in transportation. We, we approved the overall work.
That'll come at the end.
Okay, we'll do that. And then, um, Transportation National Night Out was a big success. Although there wasn't highly attended, we had a great, uh, um, what do you call it? Podcast, and there were people there to, to support it and participate, but, you know, everybody, you know, tried to do their social distancing and such like that. And let's see, what else on my list? Oh, went to Commander, Commander Knight's barbecue, which was fun to celebrate her, her, her tenure at the, at the police department, and have a hamburger in her honor, although I didn't have a hamburger. Some of the people did, I haven't, forget. Yes, thank you very much. And, and that is it for today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, I have a question. On the, the, the folks that are still in the, in the housing right now, the pro, part of the, the project room key, do we know how much longer that project is going? For, I know it's kind of reaching its, its end, both in funding and timing, but I didn't know if there was a, a time.
The current funding is scheduled to run out somewhere in January, maybe. However, I don't know that there is a, um, is a stop date for the program.
Oh, got it. Okay. Thank you.
Is, is that the million dollars? Is that still, is that, or is it just, is it an ongoing, the thing that you apply, that the county applies for, on a monthly? How does it work that you're getting the...
You're, you're getting into an area that is, is complicated, and I have, I don't know that I give it justice in explaining. We did use some state, some state funding money, as well as some federal money to, to do this program. Some of it was specific to, um, for COVID.
That key, that key thing?
For Project Room Key.
Yeah.
And so that funding was there. There's only so much in that pot, and it's only gonna last so long. And, and, and I believe that, I don't know that they have a hard stop date, and they're looking for additional funding and finding ways to continue it, so that these, this particular at-risk group of people... so that these, this particular at-risk group of people are not just in the cold, in the middle of January. But that's, more to come on that.
Yeah, and I think next, our next council meeting will have a more in-depth review. I think we've invited Don Simone to come give us an update as well, so.
Oh, good.
Actually, actually, Mayor, I got an email from him. His report to the Board of Supervisors got moved to November tenth.
Ah, okay.
So, he wants to do our report.
After that.
That evening after that, he doesn't want to do it prior to going to the Board of Supervisors.
Understood.
It will be on November tenth.
Okay, so November, November tenth will have a more holistic update as well.
Right.
Okay, that works. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple, a couple of thank yous. One, first of all, I want to thank Nick and the Public Works Group for the Lower Main Street project, which is all completed now. That was the surf, the cracked ceiling, slurry ceiling, and beautiful new striping job that he was the driving force behind getting that done. And managed to get Caltrans to the table, and it looks really, really great. And those are main entrances that starts at Pacific Street and heads all the way down to the bridge and beyond the bridge. So, really good preventative maintenance and very timely having all that striping redone, and have gotten lots of compliments on that, so, thank you. Second shout out goes to our city engineer Rebecca Neves. I got a call from an eighty-nine-year-old resident who is a regular traveler of Broadway. And his comment was, "All the way to Wilsey Street." He is a regular chopper up at Grocery Outlet. And is just most pleased with the way the city pulled that all together. And I explained to him that the reason we got all the way to Wilsey Street, and what he called the double bump, was because of the cooperation of our city engineer and our good contractors and just good studious work out there. And I will echo his, his eighty-nine years of seniority and say, thank you very much. It was a pleasure getting that phone call and being able to share that fun story with him. And so, that's the kind of pluses that we are getting. And he did have a couple rumbles, "Why did it take so long?" "You gotta get the paper there," and you do it. "Well, that makes good sense," well, I'm glad. So, I mean, we were just getting it all up ourselves. Uh, thank you very much to Rebecca and her staff for pulling that together, and all the contractors that were involved, all the way up to Chanel School now, it's beautiful. So, as people come off the highway, which they seem to be doing in large numbers, they're coming into a town that looks really sharp on both ends. The last, the last thing I would like to mention is that Cleveland and I, and I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, you'll be there tomorrow, but we are meeting again with PG&E tomorrow to discuss the PSPS events. Brandon Sanders is going to be introducing our new area government liaison person. She's taking over for him and covering El Dorado, Amador, and.
Teleport?
No, not, yeah, Alpine, no, Sierra. It's a little county way up and tucked up above there.
She know what she's getting into?
We will, we will meet with her tomorrow. And hopefully, getting some good information. But we are actively working with them on, to address the events.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Brelly?
I just want to kind of just veto, especially on our streets. It's just amazing. I mean, I know what's happening, and yet I get in my car and drive around and say, "Oh, oh, oh," you know, and see it. And it's, things are happening so quickly, you know, how they're, as they're getting things done, and it's just, it's wonderful. Like Mark said, it's just really something to be proud of, or, and whoever would have thought that was going to happen? That we were proud of our streets and stuff. There was a time not too long ago when we, you know, weren't, so, um, anyway, and I just, again, I just want to thank this town for cooperating because I think that's what got us on the orange tier and, you know, I think folks are really cooperating, wearing masks and, you know, all the things that that we've been asked to do. And I think it's paying off, I hope so. I I just, I I hope I don't see about any more small businesses closing, that breaks my heart when I see it. Um, but those that have survived so far, I'm hoping that it continues, you know, just sad times we're in, so, anyway.
Thank you.
Could use to them.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Taylor?
All right, thanks, Mayor. Um, I'm really happy to be back in the chambers. Seems like it's been a really long.
Welcome.
We're happy to have you.
Welcome back.
It feels good to be here. Um, I also attended National Night Out, and I just want to say thank you to the Placerville Police Department and all of the restaurants that participated and the residents that came out. Um, I, I enjoyed getting out of the house and picking up some takeout from Amore Mio and taking it back to the family and getting out and seeing people. So, it was a great event. Um, I'm glad that we were able to do a modified version of it this year. Um, I attended the Virtual League of California Cities Conference with several of my colleagues, virtually, uh, which was a three-day event. I watched the League of Women Voters City Council Candidate Forum, which was really good. Um, I remember doing that a couple years ago and how nervous I was for it. So, it's, it's not easy to do. Um, I appreciate all the candidates taking the time to do it. I think it's probably the best way for voters to hear what the candidates stand for. Um, and then kind of picking up where Councilmember Thomas left off, I met with Housing El Dorado, which was formerly Western Slope Coalition for Affordable Housing. And they have been making great progress finding some solutions to the winter housing situation for our homeless residents. They have secured a location with Green Valley Church, and that's pending Dr. Nancy Williams' approval, but they've been working with her on coming up with some COVID protocols. They're also working with the Community Foundation for Strategic Planning and Fiscal Oversight. They are starting a fundraising campaign and hoping to raise a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And I'll be joining their executive committee to help out as they get up and running. So, this is, um, I think this is a really good solution, it's a nonprofit stepping in to kind of, you know, nonprofits can be much more nimble and quicker moving than governments when it comes to this solution. So, I think this is great and it's really hopeful, and, um, I mean, we we hear the public comments about how, how much this needs to be addressed in our communities. So, I'm really, I'm hoping that we'll see some improvements this winter with winter housing, so.
Could you express at least my appreciation, because I know the hours and and time and energy that that group puts in?
Yeah.
And to, to get, to get this idea and move, move it down the field is a monumental task, to bring the people together, to, to find a location, to find volunteers. And and truly, it is a nonprofit that's going to make this happen the most successful way, and where we're, where the money that is available to support them can be utilized.
Yeah.
In, in a, in a, in an efficient way. It just, you know, government just can't do it like they can.
Right.
The cost is prohibitive, as you can see with housing, you know, twenty to, you know, thirty individuals for, for the, for this last period of time. So, you know, their efforts express to the, the appreciation for their efforts because, you know, we as a city, it's, it's not our bailiwick. We don't have the funding, we don't have their expertise, and those guys are just hitting it out of the park and working hard, so.
Yeah, I will. And they're doing a really great job, and I know.
Is it city and county, that, that they're, they're, it's not just for city folks for the housing, right?
Um, no, I mean, it's for all the house, the homeless residents. It won't, it won't be able to house all of them. Um, there'll be a, a limit on the number that they can house, but.
I know that they've come to the council several times, you know, and told us that, you know, winter's coming and.
Yeah.
Um, so I thought it was just the city folks, so I, I.
It's pretty much Western Slope, yeah.
It's, that's a whole Western slopes.
But, but a large number of them reside in the city, so I think it will alleviate some of our, some of our issues. And I know that they want to make a presentation, I was going to ask for it, at the end of the agenda for upcoming agenda items, they would like to make a presentation maybe at the next meeting.
Historically, it's been somewhere between thirty and forty people a night, and that's not.
Yeah, I think that's what, what it will continue to be, so.
Kara, could you repeat again the name of the organization?
Housing El Dorado.
And they're working with Green Valley?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you for being a part of that.
Yes, that's, that's tremendous news, and especially to have our faith in nonprofit, uh, uh, sector step up on this is, is huge. That's really what.
Well, they always have, but, you know, it's a monumental task, and they kind of lost a lot of their volunteers, my understanding.
Yeah, especially during COVID.
So, they're hoping that, they're, they're going to have it staffed, that's what they're fundraising for, it'll be staffed and insured and, so. So, yeah, it's, it's good progress.
So, would, um, the staffing be like, um, not Conservation Corps, I'm trying to think of the name of the group that's, that does this in different places? Um, sort of the bonded and licensed type of, of, uh, group that would do this?
I would imagine, but I'm sure that they'll be able to cover that at the, at the presentation, or, yeah, those.
Perfect.
Because in the past, they always have, it's been the members.
Correct.
The church members, and that's why it just became.
Right.
Overload for those folks, because they just, you know, uh.
Especially during the pandemic, yeah.
One of, one of the biggest issues, because a lot of people have done, have, have been volunteers or been elderly.
Correct.
And, and they are not capable, it's not good, good for them to be.
Exactly, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Kara.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, uh, so, like my colleagues, I was also virtually part of the League of Cities, uh, uh, convention. Um, one of these days, we'll hopefully get to see people in in person again. Uh, had a State Cog meeting as well, was part of National Night Out. Thank you to the Placerville Police Department. Uh, then Chief, Chief Ren and I were able to go to a couple of the, the locations that we had this year and talk, talk to folks. I'm, I'm always impressed with the, the level of questions that we get from people in the community, how much they care, how much they know, which I think is great. Uh, and so, it's always a, a great thing to go out and and talk with them. You know, one of the things that I'm sure is on people's mind is all of the construction going on around town. Uh, and so, if you all will indulge me, I'd like to actually have Rebecca come up and just kind of give a, just a brief update on sort of Mosquito and Spring Street, what's going on, uh, just to give the public a little bit more information on, on those projects. And she could throw in Broadway too, if she'd like.
Good idea.
Thank you, Kara. Um, so, as you know, we are, I'll start with Spring Street, that one's an easy one, believe it or not. Um, so, you recall from last week our special meeting for the change order work for replacing the water main? We did pull up a segment of the pipe on the upper end. We're, I, I, just to refresh everybody's memory, council had approved or authorized us to proceed with three hundred and eighty linear feet of water main down towards the lower end of the hill, so that's about, uh, right off of Coloma and Highway forty-nine headed east. And then, we were going to assess the remaining four hundred and twenty feet. Uh, we did pull a segment of pipe out, it's actually in the back of the room. And structurally, it's very sound, which was great to know, it's, it's an old steel line. And steel lines can actually last for quite a while. We had a few steel lines that appeared up in Main Street when we were doing the water main on Main Street. There were, um, we found the asphalt for those about nineteen thirty-three, and there was actually nothing wrong with the line, but it happened to be going right through a cistern. So, so we thought it might be wise to not keep it in service if we can't even access it. Uh, but there, the remaining water main heading up towards tunnel beyond the initial three hundred and eighty feet appears to be sound, and so, we are allowed to omit that. Um, however, we have found a few surprises out there. I mentioned the Placerville specials. Um, we have found that, uh, uh, some asphalt indicating that the storm drain that's out there, um, that we were already in the process of replacing, was actually doubling as a storm sewer. Um, I mentioned, um, you know, the city of Sacramento had a combined system at a time, and when we placed our lines in there, at that time, it went to the wastewater treatment plant that was down off of Main Street, um, lower into the hill, right? So, uh, we've been correcting the issues as we find them. And, um, yeah, we just, everybody's just kind of taking a breath, some of us using a brown paper bag to, you know, but, but it's fine. Um, and, let's see, um, so, construction is delayed by about two weeks from the original schedule, but they are making up some time. They were actually out there on Saturday potholing for the new alignment for the water main, just to kind of make sure that there weren't any, you know, glaring conflicts or anything. So, um, they got that work done, got the information, moving forward. One of the awesome parts about this project is, you know, right now, as it stands, the existing water main was maybe three feet away from the existing sewer. So, this project is actually allowing, and the change order you guys approved, is actually allowing us to relocate the water ten feet from the sewer, as it should be, as an industry standard. Um, and then, the line actually veers and breaks away right at that thirty, three hundred and eighty foot mark. So, we were very excited to see that we're kind of keeping things a little tidier. Um, let's see, and then Broadway, we've been paving a lot. Um, we did have an issue that appeared on Saturday afternoon. Um, we had a water main that wasn't very old at all, break, and we addressed it. We've actually ground off the new asphalt, and we're addressing that as well. There was no indication at all that that water main had an issue. There, again, there was no service log, no history. Um, we were, um, under the impression it was actually a fairly new line, there was, we found some asphalt from nineteen eighty-three. Um, so, but when we were repairing the break, we did find some less than favorable backfill material, which could have exacerbated the, the puncture that actually happened to the line. It was an eight-inch AC line. So, they've repaired that, they're repairing the, they did, they did temporary fix on that, that evening. And then, they are going to be peeling back on the main and doing a proper repair by coupling in a piece. And while we're doing that, we're obviously assessing the pipe to AC when it gets questionable, gets a little gummy and a little squishy. Um, so, we're going to check on that. We did have, um, you know, some pothole data on that line, and it indicated being in good shape. So, it was, it was a humbling moment, they all are. Um, and then, we are proceeding with, um, oh, that's an agenda, never mind. Did I answer any questions?
Uh, Mosquito.
Mosquito, thank you. Oh, yes, actually, we are almost done with all the utility improvements on that project, very excited. We have about three weeks worth left on that. And then, once Veer Camp finishes up on Spring Street, they'll flip their crews to do the paving on Mosquito. So, the, the, the Mosquito portion of the project goes from clay to city limits on the north side. We are looking at potentially adding in that remaining southern portion from Clay Street to Highway fifty, which is actually supposed to be delivered as part of the Placerville Station Two project. So, we're looking at what kind of options we can do for delivering that, getting the road buttoned up and cleaned up for the winter.
Any questions?
Any questions?
What would be a, a factor involved in weather-wise not allowing them to continue with Mosquito Road? I don't want to wish anything or speak it into existence, but where's that line where asphalt's not a great idea to put it?
Temperature.
What is that temperature?
Fifty-five.
In the.
Fifty-five and, fifty-five and rising is paving temperature.
Okay.
Yeah, you can do some cold weather paving, we've done it, um, under extenuating circumstances. We actually did it on Blair's, and you, you modify your mix, mix, your, your AC mixture. Uh, it's not preferred, but in that particular instance, it ended up being a godsend, because then that following month, we had just a huge rainfall amount in January of twenty seventeen. And Wilsey was actually closed because the creek had overtopped the culvert, making Blair's the only way to get out from Escaton, which thankfully, we had paved the month before. Dumb luck, divine intervention, however you want to categorize it.
Thank you.
Sure. Yes, sir.
Rebecca, why don't we go and start the Park Ride project, is that coming up?
It is, um, so, we act, I'm actually over there, I have the draft RFP for Construction Management Services, so I'm glad you asked that. Um, we are tentatively scheduled to have a construction contract awarded March of next year. That is one of the reasons why we're looking at, um, escalating the schedule on the remaining portion of the paving, because the utilities have been done. We, you may recall, we brought forward the utilities and the water main replacement that was originally in Placerville Station, and we added it as a change order under the existing Mosquito Road Utility Contract. So, that, when I say that they're almost done with that work, three weeks from now, that's the work I'm talking about. It's actually the Placerville Station Two Utility portion.
PG&E still growing up?
They are, they're doing great, actually. They, uh, you know, they, they've had their schedule slip a little bit, but Cory is very, very persistent. So, sure.
Uh, just one, like, because I haven't, haven't driven up there since Sunday. Uh, are the, how long do we, are the lights still, the one-way is on Broadway still going? the, how long do we, are the lights still, the one ways on Broadway still going, or, and if so, how, how long?
Great, great question, actually, I, I had the pleasure of being in town, um, all weekend, and, uh, yeah.
You know it's pleasure, pleasure.
No, it's in the eye of the beholder, so, um, uh, we are making, uh, an effort to pull those signals by noon on Saturday, we are, um, like I, I mentioned, you know, we had the water main break, so what we've done now is we've ground down off the top, we're letting the sub base dry, they're re-rolling and re-compacting, and we're going to be paving Saturday morning, and then it'll be ready to pull by Saturday, that, we saw the same issue, um, when we were out there on Saturday, there was a few folks who, um, I'd like to think it wasn't impatience, that it was just lack of observation, or, you know, sugar delirium from the amazing candy apples out of Upper Hill, but there were several folks that missed their red lights, um, and were, uh, we had a potential head-on situation, and so we would flag them through and get them through safely, luckily, we were out there to do that, um, but it was, it was an interesting scenario, and we als, also, you know, had the chance to observe, uh, the congestion through town as well, so.
It was horrible.
Yes, ma'am, it was horrible, yeah, so.
That'll be another discussion of the later made.
You know, in, in that area up there, um, right on, what, the, the new Parkin Ride that you're gonna?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I, I don't know why I decided to go to Grocery Outlet Sunday afternoon, it was the most stupid thing I could have ever done, but anyway, I did, and I was coming back, so I was caught in the traffic coming by E I D, there were several cars that decided to get out of all the congestion, and they were speeding through that parking lot, and I was wondering if maybe you might close it off or something.
Drop a K rail at the entrance?
They were, yeah, they, oh, I mean, the dust was just flying, but, but they were angry, you could just tell, they were just mad, and they were tearing off through there, and they were trying to find a road that we could, it was just ridiculous.
So, yeah, we've kind of talked, I mean, we can talk about the traffic if you'd like, but, I mean, several observations were, um, that the majority of the traffic that was actually cutting through town was locals, uh, because the highway was at a dead stop.
Oh, it was.
Mm-hmm, and, um, uh, I will say, I believe, uh, Mayor Saricosa observed, uh, a twenty-three minute delay driving through town.
Yeah, so I drove, so I, I tested it, I, I went out intentionally, uh, five o'clock on Sunday, and, you know, went down to the, to Grocery Outlet, and then drove back, uh, and even though there was like four times I wanted to veer off and take a, an exit or, you know, a shortcut, or, in this case, not really, but, no, it took me twenty-three minutes to go from Grocery Outlet to Spring Street to go back across Highway forty-nine, uh, which I believe is probably double the time it would have taken me if I had, say, been on Highway fifty and just gone through the traffic through from Bay Chanel to, you know, through, through the last light through town, so, I know that's something we've, we've talked about.
Yes.
But, yeah, it literally took me twenty-three minutes, uh, from that whole area to go through, and this was an incredibly busy day that Sunday, but, uh, it's a.
It was unbelievable.
Interesting. Thirty minutes on Saturday to go from Point View to, um, Coloma Street, and, and thirty minutes with a screaming baby in the backseat.
Oh, my.
Feels like sixty minutes.
On Highway fifty?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Was that on Saturday?
Saturday.
Okay, yeah.
It took me a half an hour from Grocery Outlet to my, to tunnel.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, we've done traffic studies, um, and, you know, Caltrans has, uh, determined a delay of about twelve minutes if people stay on the highway, but obviously, we're kind of hearing, um, a little bit of collection of data that doesn't necessarily a hundred percent support that, but, I mean, the fact of the matter is, we've run into an issue where, um, neither are local roads, and, and when I say are local roads, the ones I see being hit the hardest are the parallel facilities, so like Broadway, Main Street, things like that, you know, and then the other part to consider too, is we do have Spring Street closed, so, you know, traffic flo, traffic behaves a lot like water, so what we've done now is we've closed the valve.
That's true, that's true.
Yeah, and so now it's going any which way it can, any other direction.
But also, you've got Pacific Street that was clogged, uh, across, across, and Road.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Pacific Street gets hit.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Pacific Street was rough, yeah.
Is that on the city streets or highway?
That was on the city street, that was at my, my, my.
Mine was Highway fifty, I was like, I'm not gonna get off, I'm gonna be good, I'm not gonna be.
You?
Yeah.
Good job.
I wanted to turn up Coleman so bad, there was no.
There were some folks that took the liberty of doing that, and then our excellent public work staff placed some very strategically well-placed cones that, uh, made it.
Yes.
Almost prohibitive, yeah, there was a, a couple of folks, I mean, I looked right at them, pointing at the sign, and they, he, he waved, but, you know, it was weird, he didn't include the other four fingers.
Yeah, the fingers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's an ongoing i- issue.
It's not gonna get me there.
That's not gonna, I mean.
It's a good time to plug the Alarado County Transportation Commission survey, that, that maybe we can give the, either, uh, the, uh, address to that survey.
Yeah.
And have it available either later in the meeting or on a website somewhere.
Yeah, so we've shared it, yeah.
Where's it at on the city's website?
It's, uh, there's a couple places, um, it's on the engineering page, it's also on our Facebook page, we actually did share, uh, the Transportation Commission's direct link, and we will send out another, um, constant contact that, you know, does another blast toward it, we've been getting great responses, um, please, please, folks, please fill out that survey, you know, and this is painful as this is, don't let our pain go to waste, let's actually kind of utilize it to provide the data and the feedback, because if we don't do that, nothing is ever gonna be done about Highway fifty.
Right.
Yeah, uh, good, great points, and, and I'll just point out, cause I, I, not only did I do the trip back, but I purposely stopped at different businesses on my way up at Grocery Outlet, but I just wanted to see the amount of people that were in some of the stores, and it was light, I mean, this was not, this is not about people stopping and going to use these stores as they head their, out of town or anywhere else.
You're right.
The east side of Placerville is getting negatively, uh, affected by people not wanting, I mean, I'm guilty of that, but, oh, I don't want to go to a tractor store on Sunday afternoon because, you know, there's gonna, you know, it'll take me a half an hour to get home to go two miles.
Right.
Um, and so, it is a real problem for our businesses and for our residents on the east side of town.
And it's not just downtown, it's like, you can, it's both in.
And on Main Street too, I mean, I remember at the restaurant on Dave's where the roads were just backed up, there'd be no one in there.
That's true, I mean, I went through and there was not a lot of people.
People don't want to lose their place in line on the highway.
Yeah.
They, they're just angry at that point, and they just want to get out of here.
And the ones that do come in were angry.
They were, yeah.
Wow. Vice Mayor, uh, that is also on, on our announcement page, on the bottom of the city's website, the scrolling announcement, it, it is one of those that you can pull it up from. Yeah, so go to our city website, on the bottom scrolling, and take the survey.
Yeah.
Uh, one last question, just for everybody, is it kind of a general agreement that, uh, during the Echo Summit closure, and we have Highway fifty to ourselves, that we really weren't getting the Apple Hill impact?
Yeah.
But now that Highway fifty's open, it's totally compromised.
This, this is also just, Apple Hill gets really busy, not.
Well, yeah, no, I, I, I disagree with that, I agree with part and I disagree with part, back then, Apple Hill was not as busy, now, I saw a half a mile line backed up to get into Apple Hill at Cedar Grove, and they got those shut off, it is, I mean, it was a complete standstill in Apple Hill, and I checked the, checked the maps, I got pictures of it, everything's red.
Yep. If you look on your Facebook feeds, I'm sure you probably saw all the photos of families and adorable kids near Pumpkins this whole weekend, it felt like the whole valley went to Apple Hill.
[laughing]
I think they did.
Yes, ma'am.
And you know what, uh, we really should be celebrating that, you know, having this area that is just so beloved, and people want to come, and, you know, and it's, I mean, it's on all the, the TV stations when, you know, they send in photos, and it's always somebody up at Apple Hill, you know, and on their kids and stuff, and it's just so sad that we're having this, you know.
We need the third line, that's, we only put the third line, it's been twenty years to get the third line.
Is that on the backup? Oh, my geez.
Unfortunately, we've already figured out that that wouldn't solve it.
Yeah.
That, that golden opportunity to do that, to really, you know, it's, it's like a Band-Aid on a bullet hole at this point, um, so, I mean, you know, we're looking at a bunch of different options, and the Transportation Commission has done a really good job working with Caltrans and coming up with some different alternatives, we did keep, for continuity's sake, we did keep that alternative in there though, so.
I did, I was gonna say, we, we should put a little note on that, on that option then, um, well, Rebecca, thank you, um, I, I thought this was important to do, because there was so much going on around town, and I know, I've seen questions, I've been getting questions, and so, figured this was a good way to get that information out there, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for all the work that you're doing, and for everybody else as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, that was, all right, so we got, we got quite a bit to go still here, uh, yes, so, uh, go on to item four, which is the closed session report, uh, Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, I lost my internet connection for a little while, uh, the council did not take reportable action in closed session tonight.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move on to item five, adoption of the agenda.
Move for adoption.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, okay, agenda is adopted, uh, we did do item six, um, so we'll go ahead and move on to item seven, which are public comments, uh, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is in the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, uh, and we'll start with, uh, item, uh, seven point one, written communication, uh, Mr. Morris, do we have any written communication?
Uh, you do have two items of written communication that, uh, were provided to you with the agenda, one, a letter from Mr. Sweeney regarding, uh, sewer charges, and another one from Nicole Gottberg regarding, um, uh, comments, uh, reading of comments by our city clerk during, uh, public comment, uh, we are looking into the issue with Mr. Sweeney, and, and we will take care of that on our end and, uh, report back on that, um, regarding Nicole Gottberg, I know earlier, uh, she, by listening out there, she was on the call tonight, so, uh, hopefully she can, uh, speak to that, you were provided that, that letter though in your packet to, uh, respond to, so, with that, uh, that's it for written comments.
Okay, great, thank you, Cleve, uh, we'll go ahead and move on to item seven point two, uh, oral communications, and I will hand back to Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, public comment is now open for item seven point two, items that are not on the agenda, um, you have three minutes to speak, I'll remind you when you are at thirty seconds, and we'll start with call-in user three.
Good evening. Who's calling user three?
That'd be you.
All right, so you blew through, you did great at the beginning of the meeting, asking for a public comment on all those items, um, but you blew through a bunch of items there I had comments on, so, if, I'm limited to three minutes on item seven.
Correct.
Anyway, um, so, I think that the, the letter from, um, Nicole Gottberg is very apropos right now, because if somebody from the public wants to speak on an item during the Zoom years, and they aren't able to, you're really doing a disservice to your electorate, so, anyway, I had a lot of comments on, when you were talking about the roads, the traffic, everything else, um, if Coleman was given special permission to do a seasonal one-way, there's a lot of other intersections that need that same potential treatment, I can name them off, uh, Carson at Broadway, uh, Highway fifty exit in front of McDonald's, Locust in Maine, Clay at Maine, Pacific at Cedar Ravine, um, we need some seasonal stops, if not all-way, partial stop signs, because we have a lot of timid drivers that will not make a turn, and it backs everybody else up, so we need to put these stop signs in so those little timid drivers will go ahead and make their turn, and the forty cars behind them can continue on their way. With the Jack Sweeney letter for the sewer, hopefully, man of his providence will get the city to understand that it's been very frustrating over many years to try to comprehend how you could be charged so much for sewer, and your water bill is so small, it makes no sense. Thank you for the interruption. And then for the closed session item, I would like somebody to report what is going on, the city's trying to buy the old post office in Anex, and at what price, I would, as your electorate, I would like to know what's going on and what the potential price is, thanks.
Thank you, and I'll just remind the public that, uh, we do remind everybody at thirty seconds, that you have thirty seconds left.
Ingram, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, councilmembers, this is Tammy.
Good evening.
Um, yeah, so, um, traffic, um, concerning Clay Street, um, you guys covered quite a bit during your, um, chat prior to this, um, did an awesome job, so, um, I did take some videos, um, and Cara informed us of some of the videos that were there, I was noticing that we are not, you guys are not having two CMS signs up, uh, up at Carson and Chanel, those were not there in place, um, the traffic jam that you all referring to, that was back on the fourth, third and fourth, um, at Coleman, um, it was, PD was not there, um, I, I videotaped a hundred people going the wrong way on Coleman, and thirty-seven went straight Maine, uh, once I called PD and they came up in place, that's when you guys saw the total gridlock everywhere, it was actually wonderful, I thought it was great, you know, no one else really thought it was good, but it still is proving a purpose to try to channel people back on fifty, um, I also timed it again this last weekend, the traffic was a little bit better adhering to the signage on Coleman, the difference was on the sign, the, neighbors are actually literally taking the barricades out into the street and cones in the street, but people are still driving around, um, yeah, it, people are like sheep, one goes, the rest follow, like water, um, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, okay, scared me, you guys were really quiet, um, uh, okay, I lost my, my train of thought, I think the signage, um, that's there could be improved, it's small, there's no warning, a lot of people, when they're frustrated, as you guys stated, they, um, haul through the construction zone here, um, eh, by the Mosquito Bus Station, and then once at Clay Street, they speed, they're just, yeah, everybody's just like in panic mode and trying to get out of the traffic, so the signage on Coleman needs to be improved, I believe, um, there could be a flip sign, um, a little, just something that could be, something could be better.
Twenty seconds.
Thank you, I wrote down the, you could do like a flip sign, you know, because you, you guys can't continue through every year just throwing barricades and cones out there, you need to have better, uh, hard signage, that would be more appropriate, but anyways, I did continue to ca, uh, take more data, so if you guys, you know, want that information or the videos, I can send it to you, but we all know what, um, what it looks like when people run the wrong way, um, all right, well, I won't take up any more of your time, I've kind of like lost my train of thought, but anyways, so, um, we have two more of this, and then after that, we'll have a little breather, I've lived here for all my life, we'll have a little breather, and then I'll pick up again prior, uh, to Thanksgiving, so, um, this would be a perfect time to get some CMS signs out there, and, um, and hopefully PD will be able to be in place a little bit more, I even saw the Highway Patrol giving, uh, tickets, which were, which was wonderful, you know, everybody's trying to do this together, teamwork works, thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Deion Perry, go ahead.
Good evening, Maureen.
Hi, um, well, hello to everyone, um, you know me as one of the co-chairs of the Western Slope Coalition for Affordable Housing and Homelessness, and we have now revamped our group to become Housing Eldorado. and we have now revamped our group to become Housing Eldorado. And as you heard from Kara, we're very excited about this. And I just wanted to briefly say a big thank you to Kara for reaching out to us, communicating, and being very receptive to getting involved with our group on the executive committee. And I hope that we will be able to come in two weeks to give you a more detailed presentation about the work we're doing, because December first is coming, and that's when we'll be opening our doors. And we've got a lot of work to do between now and then, and I hope you will think about personally and as a city government, how you can assist us in this process. But we are doing it privately, through nonprofits, and Charlie McDonald at the Upper Room will be the lead supervisor of the, the housing project pathways. And he's really stepping up and expanding the role of the Upper Room, so that is wonderful. And then the Community Foundation is really giving our, you know, volunteer group a little more oomph with their experience. So, we're very excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen, thank you for the work.
Jane McGinnis, go ahead.
Thank you, Regina. Hi, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I wanted to just give you a little more additional information. It was nice to hear Maureen's voice for the second time today. There are twenty people at the Project Room Key motel in Pollock Pines, and another twenty-two in Tahoe, so we have a total of forty-two. The, the seven day, seven nights a week program through Green Valley is limited to twenty people, so I just wanted to be sure you were aware of that. This means basically that if we can keep the funding coming in, even after Project Room Key runs out of money in, I guess, January, that we will be able to be housing sixty-two people. The difficulty here is that we have eighty percent of the four-hundred-and-eighty unsheltered people on our side, on the Western Slope. We have also eighty percent of the hundred-and-thirty-three people that are what's called semi-sheltered. They have some shelter opportunity, but not a lot. So essentially, what we have is a private effort that's going to take care of twenty people, and we're going to have three-hundred-and-eighty-four unsheltered, without having access to the Green Valley program. Because once the twenty-person cohort has been established, unless somebody disqualifies themselves based on behavior, there's not room for anybody else to move in to that cohort. So, I just wanted you to be aware of the numbers, because it's not as comforting as it might sound. At the same time, we're going to have a Zoom meeting tomorrow night. Maureen called me today and recruited me for the Communications Committee. We're going to start putting together written materials that hopefully will reach the heart of people and cause them to donate funds, to, to build the war chest for this. So what, what do I think you, the City Council of Placerville, can do to help on this? I know that the county has the funding, the supervision, the, the contract with EDOC COC, but you are a partner with them through the joint resolution.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. And the difficulty here is that EDOC COC, two weeks after the joint resolution was signed, slowed down, and instead of meeting every other month, they are now meeting only once a quarter. Their next meeting's going to be in December. And so I'm asking that the members of the city council contact the Board of Supervisor members that they have the closest relationships with. Dennis, that doesn't count you. And, and do everything that you can as their partner to stress to them the importance of keeping EDOC COC moving, because once they finish their project, the money stops. They are a primary service provider, and they are stretching out the time. Whereas the joint resolution calls for a speed-up, they immediately slowed down. And we are talking to them about it, but we need your help with this to, to put some stress in that area, to keep the overall navigation center project going. Because what has happened this week is wonderful. What has happened in the last few months is wonderful, but it's not a solution. And God bless you for everything that you're doing. I'm praying for all of you, and I'm, I'm hoping that we are going to find a way for these three-hundred-and-eighty-four unhoused people this winter, and eight-hundred-and-fifty children that aren't even a part of these numbers. So God bless you all, and thank you for the extra time.
Thank you.
Jennifer Chapman, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. I guess first I wanted to say thank you to Kara and Woody Delorio for having a, sort of a small meeting with me and Tammy and Ed regarding the Highway fifty alternatives. And I just want to say, it would be great if you could, I guess, you know, just use your communication tools to remind folks that the deadline is Friday for comments. And I think it's just very important to remind people that these are just four concepts, and that they are not the only alternatives, and to really encourage people to, to discuss, you know, other alternatives or solutions that they see. I'll just say, too, just tearing off of, you know, of course, our impacts on Clay Street related to Highway fifty, you know, my neighbor Tammy and, and Tammy and Ed, you know, we work on this together a lot. But in any case, you know, right now, the focus seems to be on trying to kind of experiment with Coleman, and that, you know, not turning onto Coleman off of Clay. But, you know, I still, for the Clay Street side, you know, most of that stream is, is heading from mosquito toward Coleman. And so the more proactive thing would be to try to barricade or prevent the flow from, you know, closer to mosquito. And so we really want to ask, if you can, just try it for one of these busy weekends. Tammy just mentioned, the next two weekends are probably going to be the most busy. You know, just try to close that west lane, you know, right there after the transit center. We know people have to access the transit center, but please try to experiment with barricading that lane, that westbound lane, and just see what happens. Again, we know we're experimenting. And, you know, Tammy and Ed, who are right there, support it, you know, twelve to six on weekends, and we really ask that you try to experiment with that this year. I feel like we need to get as much information as we can about, you know, what these different treatments do to the traffic pattern. You know, just back to traffic calming, I'll just say that, you know, it was a great neighborhood chat, but I know a lot of people weren't there. Even some of the Measure L people, like Sue Rodman, mentioned to me that she was just confused about the neighborhood chat, didn't know how to get into Zoom. And so, you know, you've got major roads, you know, kind of involves people that didn't participate. So that's unfortunate, and I, and I'm not clear about the status of the draft traffic calming policy.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, and I just want to thank PD, the Police Department, for helping when I had to have my car towed, and that was going to be like a truck going across Clay Street, and they helped manage that. And then I'll just also say, the housing survey, remind people about that. Thirty-nine-five Cedar Ravine is to make, you know, a triplex or a duplex in a historic district when we've got the Placerville Drive and the, and the Broadway corridors that need investment and need to be the place that we really develop lots of, you know, mixed use. And then I guess lastly, I'll just say, if anybody hasn't seen the announcement, we do have a great guest speaker talking to us on Thursday night from Michigan about a non-traditional park that has to do with copper mining history in the Kiwanau Peninsula. It's a really exciting, interesting topic, and it is a non-traditional park with about twenty-two or twenty-five heritage sites, not federally owned. They're basically, you know, nonprofit organizations, or, you know, multiple kinds of ownerships. And I think it's a great model for our, you know, gold mining era and history that we have here, and, and just a very non-traditional partnership park model. So I hope some of you will participate in that Thursday night. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jonathan Gainsborough, go ahead.
Good evening, my friends. I was so blessed, my, my screen doesn't show myself, not that I'm much to show, but, but it was wonderful seeing you all and sensing the, the warmth in your hearts, and the nodding of heads when Dennis and then Kara shared about the progress of what's now Housing Eldorado, which was the Western Slope. And I, I'm not going to use all my time, which is a miracle in itself for a preacher, but semi-retired preacher, so moving right ahead. I, I attend the EDOK, the Continuum of Care up here, as I have in Sacramento pretty much weekly for the last three or four years, so I'm conversant with a number of the dynamics. But at the latest Eldorado opportunity knocks, Charlie at the end, Charlie McDonald, who's really stepping, stepping up to the plate beyond what he's already doing as world-class, and what you all have helped him, I'm sure, in the past to keep the Upper Room running. Charlie spoke, and he said he had gone to visit up at the Project Room Key, and he said, "Some of these homeless individuals that were, that were all, at one time, just as you were, each of us was some mother's darling." Charlie saw these people that he had known for years, and Charlie McDonald said this at the end of the Continuum of Care for, for open comments. He said, Charlie said, "I could hardly recognize some of them that I had known for years. They were so changed, they looked so much more whole, and that they were progressing on with their lives." And I just wanted to encourage you with that, that yes, well, twenty is, is not the whole homeless population, but it is a definite step in progress, and I hope that you will feel pleased as being a part of that, encourage that, and perhaps come up with a little, a little do re mi for them. But it is progress toward what we all know needs to be done. We, we can't leave human beings out in freezing sleet, rain, snow, sub, sub, sub thirty-two degree weather, and we wouldn't do, we wouldn't do that for our pets. So progress is being made, you're all part of it, and I'm, I'm proud to be part of the community and part of this wonderful city called Placerville. God bless you all and your families.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Last call for item seven point two, oral communication on items not on the agenda. I see no further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you, Regina. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to item eight, the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote, unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion.
I'm moved to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. I will go ahead and open up for public comments on the consent calendar.
Start with call-in user three, go ahead and unmute yourselves.
Is that for me?
Yep.
All right. It'd be great to know, like, how do I unmute myself, but anyway. Item eight point six, second reading of an ordinance does not belong on consent calendar. I don't know who put an ordinance second reading on consent calendar, but it belongs under item ten, ordinances. So hopefully it was an oversight, and you guys will correct it right now. That's it.
Kirk Smith, go ahead.
Evening, Kirk. Kirk, you still on mute? Regina, why don't we come back to Kirk if there's another person?
There isn't, but I can see that Kirk is unmuted, so he should be able to talk now. Kirk, are you there?
Microphone plugged in. So here's a simple question. I'm looking at the payroll distribution that you've come up with, and right now, it's about just over fifty thousand dollars right now for three law firms. That's a huge amount of money. On an annual basis, that'd be about a half million dollars. I'll put in a formal records request for billing records, but can you give us some idea why that's so much money? Something on seasonal that requires you to hire lawyers?
Thank you.
Last call for item eight, consent calendar. No further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll just give a couple of things here. I know on the law firms that we have an incredible amount of PRA requests that have, I know, cost more as well as our cannabis, on the cannabis appeal, that has probably cost us a lot more on our legal side than we would normally ever be spending. But, Mr. Morris, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything else, but I can, I know certainly those two things have been a huge cost on our.
Yeah, there, there is one other one that is quite extensive, and that is the sourdough lawsuit. However, that is a pass-through that they are covering, and the city is not paying that cost, but it does show up as us paying that. Mr. Warren, anything else? I think those are the main ones there.
Yeah, just real quick, for BDK, or Best, Best and Krieger, there were some invoices that we were spending additional time reviewing to go back to.
Just, just. You might want to.
Fiscal year, so there's some makeup from the previous fiscal year there that you won't see next, or next check register or something.
Gotcha, so a true-up. Okay, thank you. And then on the, the ordinance. Yep, go ahead, Cleve.
Yeah, and maybe the city attorney would like to, to jump in here. There is no requirement that those cannot be on consent, and many other jurisdictions do put second readings on consent. If there are no further questions, no changes, et cetera. And due to a fairly long agenda tonight, we felt that there were not further questions that we had or that we had heard from the council or public, and therefore it would be appropriate to put the second read on consent calendar, so.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, what Cleve said is correct. There is no requirement that they have to be on, another part of the agenda besides consent. They can be on consent in our, or jurisdictions that routinely do that.
Yeah. And from my perspective, the public has the opportunity to comment on that issue as well, and documents are there in the agenda, so I think there's ample opportunity.
So does it matter whether it's a second reading, right? I mean, I mean, you wouldn't put the first.
First reading, we would never.
It wouldn't allow. Maybe that's where the confusion is with them, you know?
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Driscoll. So we've closed public comments, we have a first and a second.
Could I just add one?
Yes.
Thing I, I meant to say, for anybody that hasn't read the, the Eldorado County Grand Jury Report, I think it's very interesting, very informative, and well worth reading. Is that posted on our, that's.
Yep, it'll be part of the.
It's on the webpage.
Okay. It's, it's really interesting, so. It's really interesting, so.
I wish they had put in their how-to-find-money as well.
That would help.
Yeah, that's a whole other issue. But yes, we definitely need a new police police station. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Suragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. So we didn't pull anything. We don't have any other ordinances or public hearings. So we'll move on to item 12 and item 12.1, which is approve a $1 million budget appropriation in state highway and shop funds for the western Placerville interchase Phase 2.2. Approve 1.1 million 70,000 budget appropriation in state SB1 partnership funds. Approve a $325,054 budget appropriation in TIMFE fund on assigned fund balance. And approve a consulting service agreement with DuBerry Drake Haglen for construction management and inspection services in the amount of $503,460.30 for said project. And approve Amendment Notice 1 to proceed to Number 3 to the consulting service agreements with REY Engineers for additional design services in the net amount of $133,403.30 for said project, and authorize city manager to execute the same. And lastly, authorize the engineering department to release construction contract documents for public bidding, and Ms. News has this for us this evening.
Thank you for for reading that off. That kind of covers the course of the action, actually. This project, as you may recall, started off actually as a potential change order to the Phase 2 project, which at that time was currently under construction. And it was an approach to try to make a quick and efficient use of the SB1 funding. So we prepared an application, submitted it to the California Transportation Commission, and we were the proud recipients of local partnership program funds, which is a competitive grant portion of SB1 funding. However, following the programming of those funds, the CTC contacted the city and said that, mm, actually, we do need to deliver this as a standalone project. So we we took a collective effort with our partners, specifically the the most notable partner is El Dorado County Transportation Commission. Woody and his team are just amazing, and we honestly don't know what we would do without Woodrow Deloria and Dan Bolster, and Jerry Barton as well. Just really grateful for them. But they partnered with us as well as Caltrans, and we decided to move this project forward. EDCTC brought forward substantial amounts of Highway Improvement Program funds, which is a federal funding source, along with Caltrans coming forward with State Safety Highway Operation and Protection Program, or SHOP, funds from Caltrans to help the city close in on the funding gaps as we worked on delivering this project. The remaining amount in the form of a local match came from the city's Traffic Impact Mitigation Program, as this project is designated as an eligible project in that program. And just to reiterate to to folks, the state and federal funds that the city has received for this project really can only be used on this project. If I could wave my wand and use it on other roads, I might, but we can't, we don't have that flexibility with designated funding sources like this, so it's important to note that. Similarly, the TIMFE program funds can only be used on projects that are actually listed in that program, too, so we are pretty much guided on available use of those kinds of funds. Staff is also recommending an amendment to, in addition to awarding the the construction management contract to DuBerry Drake Haglen, staff is also recommending an amendment to the design contract with REY Engineers for construction engineering support to the city and the city manager, or the construction management team for bidding, and should any design modifications be needed during construction. This project has already received its encouragement permit and related approvals and permits, and is now ready to be released for public bidding. The tentative schedule shows releasing the project out to bid this week, with the notice of bidders is actually being published on Friday. And the bid opening is actually scheduled currently for November 12th, which is a week sooner than listed in staff's report. But tentatively scheduled to award a construction contract at the first council meeting in December with tree clearing similar to what we went through last time in January, and heavy construction resuming after that. The duration of this project is substantially less than Phase 2, it's about a year, versus Phase 2 is scheduled for about two years. So that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Great, thank you, Rebecca. Any questions at this moment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up public comment.
Comments open for item 12.1. We'll start with caller user three.
Go ahead, caller three.
Is that me?
Uh, yes.
Okay, looking at the the plans here, the only question I have as a potential problem is the short length of the acceleration lane. Anyone coming into Placerville understands that all the cars going under-railer drive headed to downtown are going about 65 miles an hour. And the way that lane merges into the two lanes on that short stretch just before you hit that hard right-hand around the hillside on the right, I really think this acceleration lane needs to get around that corner down to the straightaway. It just seems a really short acceleration lane, potential crash problems. And it's probably way too late to do any kind of design changes to it, but I just see a lot of wrecks potentially with this design. So that's all. If you can consider extending the acceleration lane around that right-hand bend, that would be great. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Last call for item 12.1, Eastbound On-Ramp Project. I see no further public comments on this one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and close public comments, bring it back to the council. Rebecca, I did have one question. The, I know we've had issues with some of the drainage in that area with Caltrans. Is that that been addressed already, or did this get into any of that where we might have other issues or I know there's always the potential for an issue, but just wondering where we are with that in relation to to this project.
Sure. So we are still sorting it out with Caltrans. You know, we've provided some data to Caltrans Maintenance. We've received emails recognizing that there's an issue, then we've also received emails that says there's no issue, and then I reattached the email that had all the supporting data that there is an issue. And then we've gotten feedback that they have a project moving forward, so I've actually been working on setting up a meeting with the Deputy Director of Maintenance, Tom Brandon, who we worked with extremely well. He retired. And so we are working actively with Patrick Bishop, who's the active acting deputy director, and he's been very responsive. He's been helpful on some of the Apple Hill stuff as well. So we're not giving up on it. It's actually not just this area in town. There's issues with culverts all through town. We found another one up near Chanel School Road, and so to answer your question, it's not being addressed with this project, but it is on everybody's radar.
Okay.
Rebecca, if I could kind of elaborate, I think more what he's referring to, we have some issues with the drainage basin on
On Phase 2.
Phase 2.
Yeah.
And did we get that resolved? And I think it's been resolved as part of, partially as part of this project also, right?
Yeah, so I'll speak to two parts of that. So there's the approval process, and then the operational and functionality of the basin, right? So approval process, long story short, we built the basin as it was approved by Caltrans in an email. And then they came back during Phase 2.2 and said, "It was never approved." And said, "That's right here." So approval process-wise, we did get that all sorted out. Operational and functionality-wise, that was actually sorted out in November of last year. The basin has functioned great. We never had a backup issue. It meters the flow exactly how it was supposed to. It was, I mean, we placed that detention basin in as part of Phase 1A to lessen downstream impacts.
And that's how we actually found out about the other one, right? Because that's when we turned this thing, we knew there was no, nothing coming from ours, but
Exactly. So our basin was wet even when there was no rain, and then we said, "Well, where's all the water coming from?" So then that's when we found one of the culverts that was draining into it, which was directly tied to a Caltrans cross-culvert. It runs all year long. So some of the suspicion is that the pipes, it's a corrugated metal pipe, which is standard issue. They were put in when the highway was put in. Corrugated metal pipe has, I believe you saw the picture of Brett in the retirement. That's what it looks like in town. So we don't put corrugated metal in town anymore, because it rusts out at the bottom and fails, and it becomes basically a perforated pipe.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I don't know if you had any comments about the ramp?
Happy to, actually. So we actually did look at that ramp. We did extend it in design, so, you know, when you design something on the state highway system, you don't get to kind of willy-nilly go at it. There's design standards you have to follow, and specifically the Highway Design Manual. Caltrans has their own Highway Design Manual, which is actually stricter than the nationwide design standards developed by ASHTO. So we actually are held to a stricter and higher set of design standards the second we step foot on state highway system. The other part is, we recognize that. We're, we've checked site distance, and we've looked at the approach lengths because it was a concern of ours as well. Mr. Drovich's comments are valid, and so we actually did extend it in design. We feel confident that it will address those safety concerns we had as well in the beginning.
Okay, great, thanks.
Sure.
Only one comment. I am, between the shop funds and the SB1 funds, and, you know, this is such a quick process here that we, you know, here a really nice presentation, and yet all the work that goes on behind the scenes where, you know, Woody and Transportation Commission are working so hard to to get these competitive grants, to lobby for the shop funds. That's no easy task either, and to get all this put together to these multiple funding sources to actually, you know, continue moving this project forward is a feat. And to recognize EDCDC and the hard work Rebecca does working with it, because it is definitely a joint effort, I think it's important to recognize, like you said early on, you know, those people over at CTC that are, they're working on our behalf, and they work for the entire county, well, Western Slope. And and so just to acknowledge that their efforts, because they are working on El Dorado Hills, they're working on, you know, Bass Lake Road, they work on all these other projects, and and this one, too. And so I just want to shout out to them for their efforts.
Thank you for saying that.
That's a really good point, Vice Mayor, and they're doing it as well as Rebecca and our team, and they're doing it without lobbyists as well. I mean, a lot of county, a lot of other transportation agencies have hired people in the capital in their spots to do a lot of that. And not only are our folks doing it, but they're also doing that lobby side of it, which, you know, it's tough, so a lot of kudos to everybody.
Thank you. We have a great team.
We went through the same thing with the other, the first phase, right?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. You guys lost a lot of sleep on that one.
Yeah, coffee's my friend.
Transit came, you know, I mean, Mindy was here then, but yeah, that was amazing, because I
And we had our project manager on the project actually refer to it as, Placerville has a knack for being able to stuff our nose under the tent and then wiggle our way in.
Well, with that, I would like to that we adopt the resolutions 1 through 5. I'm not going to read them all.
Great, we have a first and a second, any
Can we go 1 through 6?
Yeah, 1 through 6. Oh, is there, I missed one? Oh, I did, I'm sorry, yeah. 1 through 6.
That's it, yeah.
I'll second that.
Yeah, okay, we have a first and a second. Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I get a repeat of who first, who made the motion and who seconded?
Vice Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Borelli
On the way around.
Oh, Borelli made the motion, and Vice Mayor made the second. Thank you.
Got it, thank you. All right, Mayor Suragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, Rebecca.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Again, a lot of, a lot of staff, a lot of councils, a lot of, we've moved the thing really
I think Cleve has the next few. A lot of, a lot of transportation commissions. There've been, what, three directors? Yeah. At transportation since we started, sticking our nose under the tent.
Since I've been there.
And we've added bits and pieces to this, and, you know, and I appreciate the concern, and I know that Caltrans has a very strict design criteria. You know, I don't think Rebecca gets enough credit. The caller's concern was about, you know, being able to merge in and site distance and what have you. But here's another one of the stick-your-nose-under-the-tennis things. The existing on-ramp that's been there for years crossing from LoHi and the Highway Patrol Office, that was a short little bike called Suicide Ramp, because you were going uphill, people were going 60 and 70 miles an hour, and you were just, you, anyway. Very quietly, that very dangerous ramp became a part of Phase 2. And it is now, everybody looks at, oh, well, it's perfectly designed merge on and off. That just did not happen, because it was just good luck. It's because of people like Rebecca and the Woody Delorians and Catherine Matthews that made sure those kinds of things came together. And otherwise, could you imagine today making that a standalone Caltrans project to get that little piece of ramp tied into what's out there now? So, yeah, I'm confident, and looking forward to seeing this next phase. And someday we'll find the money to actually put the offer in the oven. It'll be a full ramp, imagine that. Congratulations to all the staffers. And that was the one where I had to mash my foot on the gas. Exactly. Yeah, you didn't want to not have your engine warmed up. Yeah, that was, or you were hitting your brakes super hard to let them in five by you. And that's all a distant memory now. It never existed, that. Yep. Thank you. All right.
We forget.
Yeah, look how great it looks. Item 12.2, Direct Staff on How to Proceed with Funding for the Water Reclamation Facility Solar Project, and I believe Cleve has it for us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity. This is a long, ongoing project, and now I will report that it's been quite a roller coaster ride in many ways. Mr. Warren and myself, I remember a good two years ago, went up to the State Water Resources Board to make a presentation to them on this solar project for our wastewater treatment plant, which was prepared by Johnson Controls, if I remember right. Johnson Controls had a representative that went to that meeting with us, and showed real potential for savings. We have a very high electrical bill running our wastewater treatment plant, and therefore, if solar makes sense, it could save us a lot of money going forward. When we initially went up to them, it was to apply for a loan for this project, which I believe the loan rates were somewhere, Dave, I'm looking, 2% to 3% approximately. Very good loan rate at that time. As we got into it more, they moved us over, if I recall right, initially to what they called the Green Program, which was for projects that saved energy, et cetera, and talked about a 50% loan forgiveness program. So we we threw up our hands and said, "Absolutely, we would love that. That makes it even more feasible and helps us move along even further." And we were moved into what was called the Rural Small Jurisdiction Section of the State Water Resources Staffing or Program. As they did that, they began to evaluate the program, and they told us that initially that they were having trouble seeing how we had penciled out even at the 50% forgiveness to give us a loan for the project. Well, there was some misinterpretation of the data that we supplied, and Dave Warren did a great job of correcting that and showing them how they were not looking at it correctly, that we did have our water rates and sewer rates, as much as you say our sewer rates are too high, they did support that that project, and we did have the funding to support it, and show still the reasonable and significant savings going forward. But they continued down that path, and eventually they came back, and I have an email from them in, I believe, late 2018, saying, "You have now qualified for a 75% grant forgiveness and 25% loan for the project." We said, "Great, we love that." And then they continued further. And in early 2020, I was informed verbally by them that we now were qualified for a 100% forgiveness loan. that we now were qualified for a one hundred percent forgiveness loan. And I think I reported that to you when that happened.
We all did a happy dance.
Or you would say a grant, which meant all of the cost or all of the savings we would realize in electrical savings would come back and be put back into the plant, back into keeping our, our sewer rates as low as we can, um, and, and helping us move forward, which we already, as you know, have some pretty high debt on the, on our sewer plant due to the, uh, redo of the plant that was done in two thousand and five approximately. Yeah, uh, oh, finished in two thousand and ten, right, Dave?
Oh, nine.
Nine, thank you. Get those dates straight. So, uh, we were very excited about that. Uh, in approximately April of two thousand and twenty, I received an email from them saying, uh, you're all approved in writing, the, this was, well, in writing, in terms of an email, the email said, you're approved for the one hundred percent forgiveness. Uh, we're, we're processing the contract through our contract legal division and the contract should be ready in June and you can move forward. June came and went and I didn't see the contract. I, I had conversations with them in July. Uh, they said, well, due to COVID and we're very busy, we're not working in the office, everybody's working from home, it's taking longer to get that out. We continued to have conversations back and forth, they're still working on it. Then in September, I received an email from them saying that, uh, uh, my contact, uh, Gerline Mahia notified me that her and her supervisor needed to have a phone call with us. Well, I threw up a red flag, obviously, something's not, not good. So, uh, Dave Warren and I participated in a, in a phone call with them, um, in September, um, while I was actually at the office on a personal emergency that I had in, in September. But, um, we participated in that phone call and they basically informed us that due to reprioritization of projects by the State Board, uh, they were no longer able to offer us the one hundred percent forgiveness. Um, and that the best they could do is offer us a zero per, zero percent interest loan. And, um, or the other option would be for us, as is spelled out in your report, we can, uh, wait and see if more funding comes available later and perhaps it could be restored for some percentage of forgiveness. We went back and asked them after that phone call, we went back again to them, asked several questions. I know Dave Warren's had discussions with them. I also had discussions on them on different things and, you know, who made the decision? Is there an appeal process, et cetera? Uh, we were informed, there is no formal appeal process to this. Uh, our option would be perhaps to talk to, uh, upper level management with, uh, with the Water Resources Board and/or go to the actual board, um, and request reconsideration. Um, so at this point, we're bringing this forward to the council to see how you would like to proceed with it. I've, um, provided an analysis by our financial advisors that show you what, uh, a comparison of the savings under the two programs. If you look back at that financial analysis, you can compare, um, let me get the right page here. I believe the first of this page, six, this is under the scenario that we receive, um, the zero percent interest loan. And if you look at the, uh, last two columns on that page, on page six, you will see that, uh, in the first year, there's a slight loss. We don't actually save any money, there's a hundred and twenty-six dollars, very minimal. And then in year two, we begin, uh, five thousand ramps up to eleven thousand savings, seventeen, et cetera. Total savings of about two point seven million dollars with a net present value of one point six million dollars, you can see on the bottom of that. Uh, comparing that, if you go to the very last page of the report, if we were to receive the hundred percent, um, loan forgiveness, um, you can see the, the full savings is six point five million, which we would start realizing immediately, about a hundred and fifty thousand in savings the first year and net present value of four point two million over the, uh, life of the project. So, that gives you an idea of the difference between having to pay off a loan and having to, and receiving a grant for the project. Um, we are, uh, we would love to have the loan forgiveness, even if it were a percentage. Uh, we do have some concerns that the, even the one hundred percent, uh, or the, excuse me, the zero percent interest loan, uh, does need to go back to their board for approval. So, that's not even a, a given that we would get that now. We, we feel pretty comfortable that they would based on our conversations with them, but we don't have a guarantee of that. Um, we have a little bit of concern if we, we do push it too hard, do they say, well, we're not even going to give you the zero percent interest loan? So, um, so we do have some concerns in that area, um, but we are looking for a direction from you. Would you like us to pursue this further? Uh, do we inform them that we would, uh, would, will accept the zero percent interest loan and be moved forward in that matter? Um, or are there other options also? Um, the, if you notice, if we accept the zero percent interest loan, uh, timing wise, it, it's going to be late spring, uh, probably into summer before we would be able to start the project. Uh, they said the soonest that we would have the agreement approved would be, uh, late spring, early summer at this time. So, um, even with us going this route. Now, the, the good news is they will accept our current application. There may be some updates they're going to request. It sounds like they're going to do most of the work. Is that the impression you got, Dave?
That's right.
Thank you. They would do most of the work, but they may request some additional information. I should probably also note that we have probably about twenty thousand dollars into this that we were thinking we were going to recoup through, for, uh, Steve Herrera's work. And I want to compliment Steve, this, this is an extremely complicated process. As you can see how long it's taken to get through. The number of, uh, pages of forms that you have to complete and the data and the information is just incredible. Um, and then also Johnson Controls, I think we said, maybe has twenty to thirty thousand dollars into this process that would have been recouped, um, through the hundred percent forgiveness and, and can also be recouped through the, through the loan process if we go with the loan. So, those are some factors to consider in the entire process. And again, uh, staff is open, uh, Dave Warren or myself can answer questions and we're open to any, uh, questions you have or recommendations of how we might think of this.
Okay, thank you, Cleve, Patty.
Um, you brought up Johnson Controls, they're kind of the ones that got us started on this whole trip.
Yes.
Um, what did, have you talked to them about it?
Absolutely.
Because I know they work with a lot of different, have they run into this before? Or were they shocked too, just like we were?
They, they were shocked, they weren't aware, that, they were actually, um, they've been very patient with us. They wanted us to move, they, they proposed some financials that, um, were not as good for the city as I saw it, but would have moved through the process faster. And we wa, we felt that this was a better opportunity and that's why we moved this direction, uh, at the time. Um, so, but they've been ver, a very good partner in helping us, uh, get through this. There's been several times when Steve Herrera needed information from them and they, you know, put their information together and got it to us.
Well, like I say, I, I remember when all this started and I remember me, even meeting with them a couple of times, you know, or their representatives, the fellows who live down south.
Mm.
And, um, like I say, this was kind of their project in a way, you know? And I just wondered if they, and then my second question was, um, the appeal process. Um, you were saying you're a little bit afraid to, to push it, but, uh, this lady, what, you said her name and I don't.
Gerline.
Gerline, that's it.
Mahia is her.
So, how long has she been with, with you?
With this project?
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty much from the very beginning, when we got moved over to this, the small rural jurisdiction section, she was assigned to us and she's been, she worked with Steve through the entire application process.
So, I'm wondering where her sympathy lies, uh, if she.
I honestly think that she has some sympathy with us because she's the one that sent me the emails saying, you've been approved for these levels of funding. Um, however.
She hasn't kind of hinted at it, you know, which way to go.
However, her, her supervisor is the one that provided most of the information to us when we talked to them on the phone. So, I think, I think it did come down from up above and, and she's, she's kind of stuck with what she has, so.
I don't know, I just think that, just, uh, reading all your, what you wrote to us, you know, the whole, I just wonder if we didn't throw ourselves on their mercy. I'm thinking, I'm going back to, um, what, uh, Rebecca said about, you know, having the conflict with emails and the state saying, no, we didn't say that and you had proof that, you know, I mean, so these big agencies make mistakes and they, you know, I'm just wondering if maybe a, an appeal might help.
Yeah, no, I, I don't disagree, uh, Marky, I, uh, Cleve, I was kind of a follow up on Patty's. Is there any repercussions that we can? At some point, you have to assume that you're talking to the correct person. Who's been in this process a long time. Was this person making, uh, recommendations that she should not have been representing? That she had authorities that?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I, I really believe, and I don't have proof of this, but as you recall, back in January and February, the state was flush with money.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
They were, and I think they fully anticipated and par, perhaps even had conversations that there was going to be additional money. As you know, our current governor is very high on green projects and.
Right.
And, uh, energy saving and environmental projects, which this is. So, I think they fully thought that money was going to be there.
Right.
As you know, uh, over the last six months, they've spent a lot of money and I don't think that, that they are, we know, the state is not flush with money today.
So, that's.
And I think that is what has happened, that they've perhaps been cut back. They told us, I believe they get fifty million dollars a year.
Correct.
What their allocation is for these projects, that they put into revolving loan funds and et cetera. And, um, I think, I, I believe that they were going to get maybe some additional money on top of that because of, again, the state is, was flush with money at the time. I don't know if that's the right term, but anyway, they, they had, they were doing it well.
There was, yeah.
Yeah. And so, I, I really think that that's what has happened, that they've had to, maybe not had to, but they have changed, as they put it, they changed their prioritization, uh, and looked more at, um, their, their goal and their vision for the State Water Resources Board is to clean up the water systems. And so, they, they told us that they were putting their, uh, the money more into projects that, for example, wastewater plants that already had violations that needed to be cleaned up, rather than ours that is not really cleaning up the water, it's, it's improving what we can do by saving energy, so.
After we spent all our money on that.
Can they ref, can they refinance the plant dead at zero percent?
(laughing)
I mean, seriously?
Well, one, one of the options.
That would be a good interest rate, wouldn't it, Mr. Warren?
Yeah, we would love it.
It would be wonderful.
One of the options that we proposed to them was to, um, could we go ahead with the zero percent loan? But then provide a request to them that if money comes up in the future, we could be considered for whatever is left on that, a forgiveness or a partial forgiveness, remaining principal at some point. They simply said, well, we've never done that before, so we don't think that's an option, but.
Do you think there's a chance that if the COVID emergency continues beyond the governor's expectations, that this zero percent loan program will become a victim?
I.
Funding's your fault.
The, the, let me tell you this, the zero percent.
I'm concerned because we've got a, you were very positive at the beginning of the year that this thing was looking good.
Oh, my gosh.
Johnson Controls, you were all, you were looking really good at the beginning of the year.
I know.
You were smiling a lot.
And I'm concerned about the time that you have put into it and Dave Warren and our consultants and what have you and to go down another road and.
And they just did it like that.
Yes, and have the terms change again.
I will tell you that there is a concern because I believe, Dave, help me out, they said a zero percent loan program is not really a program they have.
Okay.
Oh, great.
They're offering, they're offering that to us because, I think, because of that sympathy factor
Kind of feel bad.
that you mentioned, that they weren't offer, able to give us any, any portion of a grant. Did you get that impression, Dave? Right, right.
Well, next time, get it in writing.
Oh, well.
I had, I had the emails, I have the emails, yeah.
Why can't we go down the stakes, Dave?
I think we ought to, I think we ought to try and appeal.
This is, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm open to that, I just, I do, yeah.
Kara, any?
Yeah, so reading the staff report, I was first struck by the fact that we had to spend eighteen thousand dollars on a consultant to help us do this loan application and that, it's been three years and, um, it just, the fact that it's that complicated, that we had to spend that much money and time on it to get to this point, uh, it just shows why everything takes so long and costs so much money in the state. Um, you know, I, it kind of feels like we're missing out because they pulled the grant funding away. Um, but if you go back and look at what was originally approved, we were looking at a two to three percent interest loan, so a zero percent is better than that. Um, so, you know, even though it feels bad, that's kind of faulty logic. Um, and it would not make sense to throw away a chance of a zero percentage loan just because we're sad that we didn't get the one hundred percent grant.
You're indeed mad.
Um, that being said, I do, I mean, I think it would be worth reaching out to maybe some higher level staff, um, to see if there is something that we could do with.
You mean some sort of a.
By not pushing too hard, I mean, I don't think we want to lose the chance to get this project done and the zero percent interest.
Uh, yeah, Patty?
Well, the only thing is, uh, Kara, that, um, Cleve said that that zero percent isn't, it isn't a, a loan really, yet. At like the two or three percent that we, they told us we could do in the first place.
It would be a zero percent interest loan, right?
But he said that.
Correct, it would be, yeah.
But you said that hasn't.
It's not guaranteed.
It's not guaranteed. Why?
Getting it, getting it.
Nothing is, seems to be, uh.
This whole thing, this is.
What it appears to be until we actually get a signed document.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, do we get the money?
Yeah.
Really?
My, my thoughts are, you know, we went down a, a very long road with them. We have, you know, a, a lot of, um.
(coughing)
Email, uh, trails to, um, you know, what, what went on with this potential item. And then it was, you know, backtracked out for whatever reason. And whether it was because, you know, government, you know, maybe borrowed against some of the special funds or they didn't have the general fund dollars to stick into it. I don't even know if, it might even be a proposition, uh, dollars that, that they come out of but then get allocated a certain amount each year. Um, I do think it's worth the effort to go, I mean, I don't want to jeopardize the zero percent loan because I think zero is better than two and, you know, better than one or anything else. Uh, but at the same time, I don't, um, I don't see the harm in going and talking to somebody at State Water Resource Control Board at a higher level to say, hey, look, here's our, you know, here's our package, here's what we have, you know, we were well down this line. It was just a matter of getting, you know, the, the official paperwork from you, uh, for them to come back and then say, well, no, forget about it. Um, I, I think that's worth at least another conversation with the appropriate level of person. I'm, I'm happy to, to go down into this myself as well in Sacramento. I'll, I'm down there anyways. Um, I think I have some people I know that work in this agency or at least the mother agency that oversees, uh, natural resources. Um, you know, this is one where I think potentially be solvable, uh, without us risking, um, that zero percent loan because we don't even know if we have a zero percent loan until it goes to the board anyways, so. Um, that's my, that's my thought.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, the offset of this money, what, what, uh, the, uh, savings that we would see from the offset between the cost of the loan, whatever that loan is, and, uh, what we receive in electrical savings? Where does that money, so, is that, is that required to go somewhere specific? Is it general fund money? Is. It, it's sewer funds. Sewer under. Sewer under. So, what, so what would that do for? Basically, it inclu, increases your revenues coming in. Mm-hmm. Uh, well, it di, no, it doesn't increase your revenue, it decreases your expenses. So, it means you've got lower expenses to apply your revenues which come from rates to pay for those expenses. So, in the long term, you could say that it reduces potentially your, I don't know that your rates would go down, but they wouldn't have to go up as much as we go over time, uh, going forward. And that, uh, that's kind of what I expected.
Yeah.
When I asked the question, but I wanted to make sure. Because this is, you know, you know, God bless the city, I mean, we've been stuck with a big old fat, you know, piece of, um, (coughing) piece of, uh, really sewer, thing here, sewer mess, sewer mess. So, um, you know, and, and the taxpayers are really paying a lot of money for this, for this thing that the, 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 I'm going to say it very politely, the state shoved down our throat. And, um, that we're required to do this, this thing in the city, you know, God bless them, they stepped up and they have passed the, you know, they passed all the things we need to do to pay for it and we're doing it. And we have a, we have a, um, a committee that watches over this money and watches what's going on. Is that right?
Not this one. Not this one.
Maybe, okay, yes, part of that. So, we, we are working on this, and, um, you know, I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to do what we can to make sure that we're gonna get every single penny to offset this. Now, I don't want to jeopardize our position, I don't want to, uh, create a negative experience, and I don't think we need to do that. I think we can go down there and say, you know, what, you know, let's see, if we can't just work with them to get twenty-five percent, you know, whatever that is, I don't know what that's gonna look like, or if we just, you know, if we just find out that, you know, it really was a really bad situation, and we, they lost the funding, and everyone went somewhere else, or they change their minds, whatever it is, and maybe we can change their minds back if we're really nice, give them cookies or something.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, exactly. I, I'm sure we can get a meeting with Wade Crowfoot, or Didi Adamo at the board, or somebody, and have that conversation. I mean, we're definitely, we're in a good position, because it's not as if we missed a date, we forgot to submit a piece of paper, you know, we're asking for, "Well, can you please let our thing come through?" Because, you know, the dog ate our homework. This is like, we have everything from you saying that we're gonna get this. Um, so we're, we at least we come in from a good perspective on this.
But if there's any, okay, and this is negative, (laugh) but trying to get sympathy from them when we were forced to build this, started this whole thing in the first place, they had no sympathy for us at all. And they, um, I, I do, I think the one thing that they did do is when they, remember the, you, you didn't, I, we were like three days past the deadline or something, and they billed us ten thousand dollars a day, uh, for being, and, yeah, for fines. I mean, that's how, you know, what went on, and John Driscoll, I believe, uh, somehow negotiated that. Uh, I don't think they dropped it, but somehow we got credit or something, but, um, it wa- they were not an easy group to work with. But I like it that Michael maybe has some contacts down there, and, and maybe you can, you know, uh-
I have a follow-up question that's, that kind of goes with what Dennis was talking about. And that is, you know, we just passed the second reading, and we're moving towards Pioneer Power, and their rates are lower.
Mm.
Our rates will be lower. Is that going to impact, oh, no, we haven't, that's a new equation that didn't exist in January of this year, for, you know, all the savings that we've run, are based on PG&E's commercial rates.
It will, but, um, I don't think-
I don't think that much.
I think it's still-
Okay.
That present value is still probably gonna be between one point two, one point six.
Because, I mean, Pioneer, right now, they're talking, their commercial customers save about eleven percent over PG&E rates.
What the financial advisor assumed was a certain level of growth in those rates, and that, I think, will actually be greater than what we're having.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought you would ask. And then, have we asked Pioneer Power if they have any kind of a solar program?
They, they do have, actually, they have their-
Be there for sewer.
I wish I could tell you the, um, the M-Power program, I think it's called. Uh, so they do have some programs that ha- try to help customers with solar and other.
Thank you.
Okay, um-
dilemma.
Yep, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and open up for, uh, we had a lot of discussion, we can have more, but I'll go ahead and open it up for, uh, public comment.
Public comment is open for item twelve point two, funding for the solar project. We'll start with Colin, user three, go ahead.
Is that me?
Yep.
Yeah.
It still is.
Yeah, I enjoyed that really long discussion, but that was good information. So, at some point in life, when you come up against a wall, you have to figure out if you're gonna fish or cut bait. So at this point, I would really like you to discuss amongst yourself and Dave, if we cut bait with Johnson Controls right now, what's the deal? What's gonna happen? Um, I cannot believe, listening to that discussion, that you guys are talking about all kinds of things that would be written down in the contract, but they're not, apparently. You're talking about hundred percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, you know, all of these things, when you enter into a contract, are written down, the details don't change, except under extraordinary circumstances. So how is it possible, you entered into a contract with Johnson Controls, and they keep moving the goalposts? How is that possible? You either have a contract, or you don't, spelling out the specifics. I do like that, um, recent discussion about Pioneer in, Energy. You know, now that's a new rock in the wheel. Uh, maybe you need to, I don't know if there's a deadline on this, but sit back, take a breath, do a little bit more analysis on it, um, where did we stand? Can we let Johnson Control go? I never liked that contract with them. I think the solar plant out there by the sewer plant was ridiculous, cutting down all those trees for sewer, for solar panels that no one's gonna clean, right? So you put up solar panels, you don't clean them, they get full of pollen and dust, they're, they degrade immediately. Um, it's insane. I don't know what you guys are doing with Johnson Controls. But if you can really figure out, if you can let them go at this point, I'm for it. That's all.
Thank you.
Sue Rodman, go ahead.
Evening, Sue. Sue, you're on mute still?
Okay, now can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. Sue Rodman, major H and L, Placerville resident, sewer rate payer. But I'm looking at this project, and I remember when this first started with Johnson Controls and their presentation, and the whole nine yards of history in this. And it looks to me like even with a three-plus million dollar cost, an investment in solar electric energy for the water reclamation facility would benefit the city. If the financial comparisons are accurate, savings on electrical costs over the cost of the loan would begin in year two and continue for the expected twenty-five-year life of the solar panels. A zero-interest loan is still a viable alternative. My thinking is the state has a big enough financial hole from the COVID pandemic to predict, prevent any loan forgiveness options being available for the foreseeable future. And here's the questions I would have for going forward. Does the solar system include a battery storage system backup for when the solar system cannot power the reclamation facility, overnight operations, when the sun is not shining, cloudy days, rain, snow, fog, smoke? And number two would be, when the solar system be sufficient to independently run all the operations at the reclamation facility, especially when PG&E pulls one of their power short, power shutdowns? Number three, does the financial analysis include maintenance costs for the solar system? For example, you've gotta clean the panels, you've gotta clear the snow, you've gotta check all the components and make everything is, to make sure everything is still working. And will some of the savings be placed into a reserve for replacement of the solar system at the end of its expected life? Those are my comments.
Thank you, Sue.
Last call for public comment on item twelve point two, funding for the solar project. No further comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. Bring it, close public comment, bring it back to, uh, the council. Um, just have one comment that, um, I think from Mr. Drovish, that the, the contract isn't, I mean, there is like, we have an agreement with Johnson Controls, but Johnson Controls is not the one moving the, the bar here, or it's the goalpost, it's, uh, State Water Resource Control Board, so, uh, I think Johnson Controls is just as, uh, surprised as we were on that front. Um, and then Cleve, I don't know if you had any, uh, comments you wanted to make on Sue's questions regarding overnight functionality, uh, and then the ability to have potentially, uh, the ability to replace the, the, the solar panels at the end of the twenty-five year.
Yeah, so number one, we, we did look at battery storage as part of the project, of course, this was three years ago, there's been advancements in them, but when we looked at it at the time, it did not pencil out to include, uh, battery storage, and they did not recommend it as part of the project. Uh, number two, as far as maintenance, uh, absolutely, this, this cost that we're seeing, the proposed cost there does include maintenance of the panels. It includes replacement of the inverters, um, at, I think about fifteen years in, is that right, Dave?
Once, yeah.
Yeah, so it does really include replacement of those, it includes the cleaning, um, et cetera. Uh, it would not, this, this only covers about fifty percent of our electrical, uh, load at the plant, so it does not cover everything, it's not, there's not a big enough space for enough panels to cover the entire load. So it only covers about fifty percent of our load at the plant. Um, so therefore, I think that kind of answers the next question, no, it will not help us in a PSBS, uh, it, it, it just doesn't. Um, we, we are on what is called a net energy metering program, is what's being proposed there, which means basically we sell the energy back to PG&E, um, and then we get credit, get credit for that, for that energy. And then in terms of a reserve, that would be up to the council, to identify that they would like to put some of that money into reserve to, uh, save up for panel replacement. Uh, our, um, JCI is pretty confident that, that we'll continue to receive those, uh, savings through the twenty to twenty-five. In fact, as you recall, their agreement that we have with them has, is a guaranteed savings. If we don't realize it, they basically are requi- uh, on, in some year, let's say in year six, we don't realize the savings, based on the analysis that's done, uh, they're required to write us a check to make up that difference of the, of the che- savings that we were supposed to get. So there is a guarantee that's involved there with, uh, Johnson Controls also, so. I think that answered the questions, was there more that I-
I don't know that I thought, is this a lease or is this a purchase?
This is a purchase.
Well, I, I think at the end of twenty-five year, I mean, the way that, even the cost of solar has gone from five years ago to today, it should be a lot less expensive, uh, to make those replacements twenty-five years out as well.
(coughing). And probably advancements in technology.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Where would we like to go with this?
So I would make a motion to direct either Cleve or Mayor Siragosa to reach out to the water board and see if we can, um, try to get a little bit better than zero percent, but be prepared to accept zero percent and move forward to that network out.
And I'll second that.
And I think we'll do it jointly.
Yeah.
As we've talked.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yep, we'll take our math, and if we need to drive down there, if they're, if they're taking meetings, we'll do that, if not, we'll, we'll jump on the Zoom meeting.
Could it help to talk to the people that you said you might, you might-
Yes, yeah, I mean, we, we-
Had a time to, or no?
Uh, uh, yes, I think what I would probably do is give background, get as much as I can from Cleve and from staff, and then, um, get some background, and then figure out who the best place to go is. I mean, we probably want to start with, you know, the, the most immediate person at the water control board, but if I think there's a, a other cut to go down the road, uh, then I'll recommend that, and-
And it's a possibility, you might, you know, somebody might say, "Hey, I got a better idea."
Right.
A couple of questions.
Yeah.
One of the things that worries me about solar is the ability of it to become outdated really fast, and this design that we're trying to get built out there, how old, how many years old is that now?
Well, they haven't finished their final design. They did just enough preliminary design to get to what they needed for the application. So they would finalize that design after we have funding in place.
So no doubt, the equipment that you would buy next year is gonna be way better than the equipment we could have bought three years ago when we were working on Johnson Control.
Correct.
And the delay, and conversely, you know, you, you put the newest stuff out there, hopefully. And is there any chance that with everything that's going on with PG&E, that we could get down the road with this, and they would somehow be allowed not to buy the energy that we generate with the net, the net metering program?
That's an interesting question, and I, I really can't answer that, other than I know that there are literally thousands and thousands of people that are on net energy metering, throughout the state, so, but I, but it, anything is possible, I, I can't say.
I think they're legislat- legislatively mandated to have to buy the, the NEM, uh, stuff back as part of their green goals that, that they have to do.
It's green, it's-
Uh, but, um, but that could change too, because they're actually, because it's, because of the early contracts, they're paying rates that are losers for, for PG&E, and they've been trying to get out from a lot of these for a few years, uh, because they're, they were trying to get out of them during the bankruptcy, and, um-
They could go bankrupt again.
They didn't let them, yeah. But there's always that risk, it's-
I like Kara's observations, though, about the fact that we weren't ready to pay two percent interest in all the time that that loan was here. And so we were, so you appropriately allowed us to grieve the loss of that back to being, you know, the idea that we could have gotten it for a grant was phenomenal, and-
Well, I, the, the whole thing is that it, they just built up our hopes so high, I mean, and like, Cleve said, I mean, God, like, every meeting, he'd come back with better news.
Yeah, well, you just be forgetting that.
And then all of a sudden, it's-
You care is right, we do have a lot invested in this, and it is the future, and it is, it will work if it's done correctly, so.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Uh, any further comments? Seeing none, uh, roll call votes.
Mayor Siragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Okuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, great, that measure passes, five oh. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and call a, uh, ten-minute break, and, um, take that break. So, with that, uh, we will re-adjourn, uh, at nine twenty-six. Okay, uh, we will go ahead and reconvene, uh, and move to item twelve point three, uh, which is to review and approve the outline changes to the position and duty of positions with Recreation Division, uh, for a high level of backup and support for recreation programs, and Mr. Zeller has his report for us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great. Um, I think that as I go through here, um, it would probably work best if, uh, the council was, take a look at the attachments also, um, the current and the proposed, uh, order charts. So, um, I wanted to start off by talking about what the current Recreation Division, uh, uh, looks like as far as its, its makeup. So, um, currently, the Rec Division is headed up by, uh, our Recreation Superintendent. Uh, he, and he manages, uh, one full-time Recreation Supervisor, who, um, is care of athletics, uh, one part-time Rec Supervisor, which manages aquatics, and one Gold Bug Maintenance and Operations Specialist, and one Recreation Coordinator, too. So those are the, those are the positions in the Rec Department. So, um, I'm sure many of you know, major changes have occurred over the last six months because of COVID nineteen. Uh, the aquatics have been closed, uh, this past summer because of budgetary considerations, but it also forced us to lay off our part-time Rec Supervisor, as well as putting a freeze on all the aquatics positions. And on top of that, the city, uh, a- as you know, uh, we did some celebrations of some folks who had retired and pursued the voluntary early retirement program. And, um, our Gold Bug Park Maintenance and Operations Specialist, Frank Jacoby, he took part in that. Um, he'll be leaving in November, but that is also leaving another vacancy in the division. Um, and it's, it's worth noting that, uh, Frank has had that position since two thousand, and he was actually part-time, uh, before that. So, um, so we have, you know, the loss of these two positions really created an opportunity for us to look at how we're organizing, correct some longstanding staffing issues, um, namely, the ability to merge, uh, the two positions, the aquatic and the gold bug, into one, uh, new full-time- into one, uh, new full-time Recreation Supervisor. And also, uh, to take that new two supervisor model and distribute the program responsibilities between, uh, those two, um, and also adding a couple of support positions on the coordinator level for aquatics and gold bug. So, part of the thinking behind this is that both the gold bug position and the aquatics positions are difficult positions to fill because they've got unorthodox structures and work schedules. They don't fit neatly into, uh, can a person that is pursuing a career in recreation, uh, that could jump right in. Um, so it's just difficult for, uh, for the, um, aquatics especially with a part-time person to try to find another person that's going to fill that and stay with us long-term. Um, so what we're proposing, and if you take a look at the, uh, the proposed, um, attachment, what we're doing is we're trying to, um, move, move some positions around and actually, uh, try to do what we do better, uh, through, through these changes. So the new, uh, requested, uh, proposed changes would, uh, put one of the Rec Supervisors managing Gold Bug and Adult Sports and then the other Rec Supervisor managing Aquatics and Youth Sports. Uh, the reason for this is just because there's certain reflexive busy times in both of those, um, items that each Recreation Professional would take care of and so that it makes, it makes more sense to split it up amongst, uh, those four major, um, Recreation Program areas. So what that would do is it also puts, um, another employee in our main office, uh, at a full-time level for a higher level of cross-training, um, gives us an increased ability to do customer service at Town Hall and it also, uh, takes the step of breaking the Gold Bug reservations, which have always been part of the onsite work that Frank has done, uh, into the main office to be handled through our existing reservation software. So it'll just give us more central control over how things work and the quality. Not that it was lacking before, Frank's done an amazing job, uh, building up the programs out there, especially the, uh, the, uh, the education component for the grade schoolers. Uh, but as Gold Bug has kind of transitioned from a, a purely voluntary effort at its inception to kind of a, uh, a half, a half-volunteer and, uh, us taking on some management responsibilities, uh, we'll, we look at this as kind of the, the ultimate, uh, third and final phase of Gold Bug, which, uh, we've got a, a person full-time that is, um, keeping an eye on things at the office and also having onsite coordinators. So if you, um, see that, uh, proposed, you can see that, um, we are adding, uh, we're talking about adding a coordinator at the Gold Bug for Tours and Facility Coordinator and that person would also, um, oversee the, uh, the Tour Guide Volunteers, which is something we don't have right now. And then on the, um, Aquatics side, uh, we would be adding, um, an Aquatics slash Youth Sports Coordinator that could move between Aquatics and Youth Sports on the busy times and help manage the, uh, lifeguards, the league directors, uh, gym supervisors and scorekeepers, which is a pretty big job. So, um, so our options, uh, that we're bringing to council are, um, either you, uh, you can, um, approve the changes to the staffing of the model as described, um, not approve those changes and provide other suggestions or not recommend any changes. Um, now on the cost side, uh, we've worked with, um, our Assistant City Manager Finance Director on costs and it looks like if we were able to, uh, go from our current to our proposed, it would be around a forty-six hundred dollar, uh, total, um, uh, per fiscal year. Um, and that's, I think, a pretty negligible cost considering all of the advantages we're going to get with our customer service and having, uh, more folks onsite and then in the office to take care of, uh, the programming. So you can see on the second page of your staff report, there's a, uh, there's a, um, an estimate of the costs there. So it looks like the difference is around forty-six, thirty-eight, sixteen. Um, so I don't consider that major financial impact and, um, this, um, this whole process was initiated by our Recreation Superintendent who, uh, gets the credit definitely deservedly for, uh, the idea of how to correct these longstanding staffing issues and I'm in full support of it. Um, we also have, uh, the support of Frank out at Gold Bug. He feels that this is a great way to, um, continue the legacy of Gold Bug Park and make sure that we've got, um, good quality management and also, um, taking care of our aquatics, uh, facility by having a person overseeing that, that's a full-time person. Uh, and with that, I can take any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Uh, any questions or comments?
This seems like a, a very reasonable and rational solution to staffing issues.
I wouldn't even know where to begin with a question because, I mean, they, they know all about this and, you know, I just feel like we just, I just have to put my faith in, you know, in the changes that they want to make and accept it, that it would be better all the way around.
Thank you. Um, let, I think at this point then we'll, we'll go ahead and open it up for, um, a public comment.
Public comment is now open for item twelve point three, changes in staffing in the Recreation Division and, um, we had someone with their hand up. Um, we'll take those comments now. Sue Rodman, go ahead.
So the unmute thing, so I can do that. I read this over and thought, it looks like a rational and it's been carefully thought out. So I think good job, Terry and Jeff and my support. Thanks.
Thank you, Sue.
Last call for item twelve point three. There's no other comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and close, uh, public comment, bring it back to the council and believe Vice Mayor has a question.
This is, this is a rather rudimentary question, but I see more yellow boxes than I, than there were before and I don't see a whole lot of difference. So is this yellow, people are taking multiple positions, um, be doing multiple positions? Because, you know, your F T Es really aren't changing a whole lot, but, um, but I see more boxes, which would, to me, would imply more bodies.
Yes, that's correct. So, um, in essence, if you were to just do the, the math, the staff math, we would be going from four, um, Supervisor, uh, three Supervisor level, uh, folks to two Supervisor level folks. Um, the coordinator doesn't change, um, on that, on that, um, secondary tier. And then, um, with the savings of being able to merge those two positions, we are looking at trying to counterbalance that because the amount of work doesn't really change. It just depends on how we're dividing the pie. So those cost savings go into adding an onsite person at Gold Bug. That would be the Tours and Facility Coordinator, that would be the eyes and ears on the ground every day out there and also adding another, uh, Coordinator to the, uh, Aquatics slash Youth Sports and then folks under them. So that's kind of the, the explanation for the, uh, increased boxes. Uh, so we are adding Coordinator positions and just dividing, uh, the other folks that they would coordinate, um, underneath them. So hopefully that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Sure.
All right, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
I, I want to thank, uh, Terry, Matt Leschman and Frank for their involvement in this. Yeah, very creatively, um, have used an opportunity where, you know, the, the COVID was the reason that drove us to look at early retirements and a bunch of very quality folks have taken advantage of that. That aside, we've really used this as an opportunity to directly a- address the people that need to be in the spots, to make sure that both the Aquatics and the Gold Bug Programs are properly staffed, you know, have the people in the place when they need them, there's no, I was concerned at first that there might be some attempts to squash this down some more, think that somebody could handle Aquatics, for example, and still be taking reservations out at Gold Bug in their really competing seasons. It, it would be extremely difficult. What's being proposed here by Terry and Matt absolutely is way, way beyond anything like that and, as I say, really represents what it takes to, speaking from the Gold Bug side, really run what, uh, the attractions that the public and our citizens enjoy out there. So with my comment, I would make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second, uh, any further comments?
Um, uh, well, I had a question, I certainly agree with, uh, Councilmember Akuna on, on his comments and appreciate their thoughtfulness in, in how they move through this project.
Likewise, I'll just say, I, you know, to me, it, and again, I, I, with Councilmember Borelli, I would sort of defer to, to, to Terry and then the staff and Matt and, you know, everyone there. You know, what's going to be the best, um, you know, makeup for it. But to me, it, I mean, just looking at it, I feel like we're getting, we're getting a, a lot more full-time coverage for a very nominal amount, so I, I think that's a great thing, uh, for.
If I could, it would be fair if I didn't recognize Frank Jacoby's contribution out there since, uh, well, for the last twenty years.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
And what you see in all those yellow boxes, and Dennis was absolutely right, there's more of them, but that is stuff that he has just quietly, each year, as popularity grew and the number of volunteers grew and then the paid employees grew, his umbrella, he just opened it a little bit more and he just, uh, has done a great job out there. So, uh, if nothing else, this is a, kind of a recognition to honor all the work that he has done to make it the success that it is today. And being very sensitive to Mr. Warren's concerns about, uh, keeping the dollars in line, yeah.
And I'll have to talk to Terry, I, I mean, maybe I'd be a, a volunteer at the blacksmith shop. I don't know anything about blacksmithing, but, um, but I wouldn't mind learning, that'd be kind of fun actually, so, to be continued.
There are, there are opportunities.
I like it, all right, that sounds good.
Yeah.
I may be, uh, volunteering, uh, my, my better half as well on that.
We'll take, we'll take you up on that.
All right. Okay, so, uh, we have a first and a second, um, uh, roll call vote please.
Mayor Siragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Akuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you and thank you, Terry.
Okay, we'll see you at twelve point five.
All right. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to item twelve point four, uh, adopt a resolution approving in agreement with H D L Companies for the ongoing audit and review services of cannabis business in the city of Placerville, city of Placerville, uh, and, uh, Cleve has this for us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, back in, uh, September, on September sixteenth of twenty twenty, council adopted a resolution which approved three business license, uh, three business licensees for, uh, cannabis businesses within the city of Placerville. Uh, we are now beginning the process or continuing the process to get those up and running and, and continue what we need to, to make sure that they're safe and running in accordance with our code and with, um, with state law. Um, part of that process, there's quite a extensive amount of review and et cetera that, that would go on and a lot of that is expertise, which unfortunately we don't have in the city. I, I'll admit, I've learned more about cannabis over the last two years.
I never thought you would.
I even thought I would, but, but there, there's still a lot that I don't know, I will admit. And there's a lot of technical things in terms of, um, the track and trace system they're supposed to have and et cetera that we need to make sure that we're on top of. So, uh, last February, we, or, or January, actually, we began negotiating a contract with H D L, who's been our consultant on cannabis throughout this process, helped us with everything that we've done pretty much. However, due to the appeals of the decision that was done back then, uh, that got put on hold and delayed. Uh, now that we have awarded the licenses, we're ready to move forward and there's, uh, some various things that, that they would be doing. Number one, uh, we still have to establish the final license fee for them, which will co- include the costs that they will pay for the services that we're required to do, which are audits, uh, to make sure that they are paying the correct, uh, tax amounts going forward, um, inspections of their facility to make sure that things like their security, their process for making sure that the, um, product is kept secure and safe, all of those things, making sure that their, uh, the applicants or the companies, I should say, are following through and doing what they're supposed to in accordance with our code again and with, uh, within state law. So, um, all of these things, uh, those costs will be rolled into this annual, uh, license fee that we will, that we will charge them. Um, a couple of other things that this will provide, number one is a pre-opening inspection. Since this is the first time doing it, we want to make sure that they've met all the requirements before they are allowed to open up. So they will do, that will be a one-time thing that won't be ongoing to years two and three and, uh, going forward. Um, but we want to do that first initial inspection there. And then, uh, semi-annual inspections are what are recommended, um, going forward, uh, in order to make sure they continue to follow that. And then as we go through the process and have questions, uh, there may be some technical expertise that, that we will need, uh, to lean on them for. And so those are kind of the four areas that we will be looking at. Uh, attached to this is the draft agreement, which has been reviewed by myself and, uh, City Attorney John Driscoll. Um, we both looked at this and, uh, agreed that this was the best route to go. Um, there may be other services that perhaps offer this out there, but as we called other cities and talked to others that currently have operations up and running, H D L is clearly the, uh, the go-to company consultant in the business that is recommended for, for these types of services. Um, if you look at the agreement, uh, back to, I believe it's exhibit eight in the agreement, uh, you can see what the costs are that are being proposed here. Um, for example, chapter one, which is the cannabis tax audits, there'll be one audit done per year. Uh, that cost is six thousand dollars. Uh, regulatory compliance inspections, I talked about the initial inspection, that cost is twelve fifty upfront and then, uh, for the, it's also twelve fifty for the ongoing ones. The first year, they wouldn't need the, the initial one and then two more, they would do, be an initial one and then one more. But then going forward, we would look at doing two inspections a year. As I mentioned, all these costs will be recovered through the business license fee. That's what this next one is, the cost recovery fees, that's their proposed cost to establish that. That will include these fees to them, plus looking at staff time, uh, police chief time, city attorney time, my time, finance director time, et cetera, and probably, uh, development services director time, uh, to, uh, look at and make sure that we're, we're following the rules and everything is going right. So there's a process that we will go through to establish, um, what that fee is and they propose that cost at a flat rate of three thousand dollars. Um, pre-licensed site visits, uh, the sixteen hundred, um, if, if, excuse me, I, I referred to that up above under objective two, that's the pre-licensed cost, which is sixteen hundred dollars. Um, and then we put in here the potential expertise, cost for their expertise to help us on questions that we may have along the way of ten thousand dollars, that's, that's forty hours of, of their work at their rate. Um, and that will only be charged if, if we actually use it. So if we don't use that time, we're not charged that. But this will go into play in terms, this is based on their experience of probably what they see on an annual basis in terms of hours of technical expertise, because that will be something that will be used in us determining, um, also the, the annual cost or the, the license fee for them. So all that cost will be recoverable. So, uh, with that, you can see, you know, the, basically for the business, for the direct cost for the inspections will be about eighty-five hundred dollars a year and then there'll be other costs based on the technical expertise and et cetera that we require going forward. Um, we're recommending that you approve this. With that done, one of the first things we are, we'll do, will be moving forward with the business license fee, uh, which will come back to you to approve by resolution, uh, so that we can actually issue that license upon payment of the fee. So that's one of the first things we'll do, we hope to have that back to you very quickly, turn around that, uh, at least by the first meeting in November, I hope to have that back for you, so. Uh, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you have, uh, move this forward.
So Cleve, everything that you've said, I, it's all, if, if you, the, sign the contract with H D L, they take care of everything, they.
Pretty much.
But, but does the funding go through Dave, through our?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, it will still go through, so Dave, Dave is going to have some time involved with counting dollars, I hope a lot of them.
I do too. I do, too. I was gonna say, that's how we're gonna pay for all this other stuff that we talked about tonight.
Yeah, so, yes.
So, did, um, the folks then that we, um, gave the licenses to, that were granted, did they know about all these costs and about approximately?
They, they are aware that there is going to be a license fee, and from what I've observed and talked to other cities, what the costs that we think we're gonna be at is well within that range of what is expected or what is charged in other cities, so.
Uh, yep, Vice Mayor.
Quick question, um, have they resolved the issue of, of the banking and the, and the money with federal, has that been resolved?
Not really, so most banks do not accept cash, uh, from cannabis types right now. There are a handful in California that do, but most don't. Uh, so, most likely, the payments that we receive, the tax proceeds will be in the form of cash, and depending on the level of cash, it will be made recommendations to you, perhaps we have other alternatives for either drop off or pick up from that cash.
So there's work around for that, or there are work around? Thank you.
Um, I, Dave, I thought I heard or read or something that, uh, credit unions can, they, that they can take the money because there's something about, it's not federally insured or something to that effect? That, and there's some credit unions that are being established just to take care of cannabis, uh, customers?
There's some truth to that, but I think there's still some federal laws that prohibit them from taking risk, I believe.
Okay.
I think the credit unions might take them down.
Interesting.
Um, I had a quick, quick question on the background checks, there's no cost to us, right? Is that because RPD's doing those or is it just, is that a built-in cost to...
They, that's, that's a built-in cost that they agreed that they would cover, we don't know, we'll, we'll see what we need to do there, but, um, yeah, they, they agreed that there would be no cost on the background checks.
Okay, and that would, so that would include everybody that's like on the business license or...
That, that's for the initial ones that are on there now. Now, there is a process where, where we have to also, uh, fingerprint, uh, employees, and they would pay that actual, they pay down, the police department when they go, that would go through them and they would pay the, pay the actual cost of that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Patty?
Cleve, how much, uh, how involved will our police department be?
Well, I think that, um, primarily responding to concerns, complaints, et cetera, um, I think that we will have them involved in possibly reviewing security plans for them and things like that also, so that they understand it and are able to, if they have to respond, they know what they're looking for and et cetera, so familiarizing themselves with the facilities and things like that, so.
Any other questions? Uh, yes, Karen.
Um, have you been in contact with the selected applicants and what's the timeline?
I have been, and they are anxious, one, one of them said, uh, initially to me, they were concerned about, um, because we had mentioned they have one year to be open from when we issue the license.
Yes.
And I, I went over that with them and their concern was, as you know, this was Reserve House, their concern was that they have a pretty expensive, extensive program designed, which will have phases to, for them to open into, and I said, my only requirement really would be that you open the dispensary within that one year and then continue to proceed. With that, they said, oh, that, that's easy, we'll definitely be able to do that. So, I can't say for sure, I know that, um, uh, one of them, uh, Chuck's Cannabis Collective, I believe, has already some, uh, plans in to building department under review to do their remodel that they need to do. Um, as you know, we have one other one, uh, Sacred Roots, who, um, received their variance from the Planning Commission, however, that was appealed to you, uh, that decision, uh, by one of the applicants that did not succeed, and that will be coming before you at your next city council meeting for approval. So, I don't really see that delaying them. We sent a letter that, out to them, telling them what the process was going forward and asking for them to verify information regarding owners, investors, and their location to make sure nothing has changed and they still have rights to that. I've received letters back from all of them now, uh, confirming that everything is still the same and they're ready to move forward. So, I think really, once we get this, um, the business license fee established and get that actually issued to them, I think they will move fairly quickly, so.
You know, who appealed the, what applicant?
It was, uh, Trees.
Trees?
Yeah.
Sure, that's him. Thank you. Do you have another question? Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and open up for public comment.
Public comment is open for item twelve point four, agreement with HDL companies. We'll start with call in user three, Michael, that's you.
Am I supposed to track like star six or something?
You're on.
Okay. Hey, um, so, I would request that you would not sign this contract with HDL until you go back and make a hundred percent sure that the ordinance that all of this is based on allows through, all pass-through costs being shifted to the applicants and the businesses. Um, because it, it sounds like from the staff report that you're gonna pass along all the city costs to the businesses, right? Well, please make sure that the ordinance allows for that, otherwise you'll find yourself in court and you'll come back and say, man, we can't charge them for this, this, and this. Um, and HDL should be on very thin ice after the last little stunt they pulled, um, doing their own little private, um, appeals process, you know, going through the herd, so HDL in my book is just right up there with Johnson Controls. Um, and so, who exactly does these inspections? It, um, it sounds like it calls for six-month inspections down the road. Who exactly does that? Does the police department go in there with HDL and maybe Cleve or some staff members? Who exactly is doing these quote-unquote inspections? And it sounded like the staff report said the first year, we're not gonna do those inspections, but after one year. I think that first year of business, you really need to do multiple on-the-spot inspections, you know, just on the spot, bam, two weeks, you know, six weeks later, bam, inspection, inspection, that first year, you really have to let these people know who's in charge, what we expect of them, and just keep them on their toes and let them know exactly what we expect of them. So that's just some of my concerns there. I know that we're kind of forced to allow this, but we can, uh, we can put our own city's requirements upon them, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Last call for item twelve point four. No further comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, we'll go ahead and close, uh, public comment and bring it back to council. Okay, uh, the inspections, uh, Cleve, is that, uh, HDL staff or is that city staff or combination there is?
That is HDL staff, now, that may be an example of where we have, uh, an officer who, or a sergeant who is over that particular area, who may participate in those, but we'll, we'll talk about that further with HDL, but just primarily HDL staff, that's what that cost is, is for.
Understood, I know, I, I think I feel comfortable with having one of our police department, um, somebody.
We just might educate them as to, you know...
Sure, yep.
A just-in-case.
Yep, yep.
I would move, uh, that we, uh, adopt this contract with HDL, item twelve point four.
Alright, we have a first and second, any other comments, questions? Alright, seeing none, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, Cleve. Alright, we'll move on to item twelve point five, approve the proposed projects of repairs and lights to the tennis courts and construction of pickleball courts adjacent at Lyons Park, and to authorize a resolution approving, uh, the filing of the application packet associated with the contract for these projects with the State Parks Office of Grants and Local Services. And this, uh, is, uh, Mr. Zeller.
Uh, good evening again, Mayor and Council. So, um, what I'm looking at doing is getting the, uh, council to, uh, consider adopting a resolution for, uh, projects under, uh, AB sixty-eight. So, um, AB sixty-eight, um, it actually has a provision within it, it's a very large grant, uh, but there is a provision in there where all cities and counties of California get a set amount based on a formula with population, and so, just so happens that the city of Placerville's award is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-two, and, um, the situation that our city is in as far as, uh, if we're considered a city of great need, uh, is we fall in the, um, eighty-twenty grant, which requires that the city does provide, um, a match amount, and that match amount is a little over thirty-five thousand dollars. So, that gives, uh, the city a total of a little over two hundred thousand dollars as a project budget. So, um, I met with the finance director to discuss funding on this match and, um, I understand that these, these funds could be made available, uh, from park development fees, and at least half of that, I'm, uh, gauging just by looking at the project and, um, the amount of work I can put in, uh, I think at least half of that can be satisfied through reimbursements. So, um, the, the next thing was really picking a project or a set of projects that is gonna really, um, take care of what the city's recreational needs are, and it's a good thing we have a, a two thousand master plan, a Parks and Recreation Master Plan update that has a lot of information in it, um, and so, I dug into that and also was trying to look at striking a balance between, um, the types of projects we can do. Uh, we can do repair or replacing of existing recreation amenities, we could purchase land for recreation purposes or constructing amenities. So, I was really looking at, seeing if we couldn't find, um, the ability to do some restoration of the things that we have, since there's always a lot of deferred maintenance for our facilities, and finding, uh, a new, uh, recreation facility. And so, going through the master plan update, it really focused on Lyons Park especially with the, uh, the two tennis courts we have out there in bad need of resurfacing, uh, and there was also a, a suggestion from the public in that master plan update that it would be nice if the tennis court lights were lighted, um, although, albeit with a timer to make sure that we weren't lighting them up all night and keeping the neighbors up. Uh, so, I looked at, um, kind of focused on resurfacing, resurfacing the tennis courts and also, um, we've had a lot of interest, um, both, uh, people walking in and emails I've received and phone calls, uh, for constructing pickleball courts in Placerville. Right now, I believe people have to go to Cameron Park or, um, I think there's, um, some other courts in, I know there's some down in Folsom, but there aren't any for our local population, and it's really one of those sports that's really growing, and it also, um, plays into, um, the fact that i-if people aren't athletic enough to do tennis, it's a smaller court with a very similar strategy and objectives, but it allows a lot more people to access that type of sport. So, um, it's, uh, so it's possible, looking at the project with the, with the existing budget, that, uh, we could add four pickleball courts, uh, just, um, and if you take a look at the handout that is in the, um, packet with you, um, there's room for four pickleball courts just to the, I call it the northeast of the tennis courts, more towards the tot lot, um, that would, uh, require some grading and some other work, but I believe that that's possible to do. And, um, the nice thing about matching, uh, pickleball courts with the tennis courts is that, uh, there are opportunities to create, um, temporary pickleball courts, uh, if needed for tournaments, and this layout would give us the ability to, if there was a tournament that we wanted to, uh, sponsor or have somebody program, it would give us the ability to have up to twelve pickleball courts, which is a really decent amount for a good regional tournament. So that provides us some design flexibility, too, for programming, uh, and of course, the pickleball courts would also have lights. So, um, I looked at other projects, um, to be considered for the Prop sixty-eight per capita Grant, uh, and some of those were the repairs to the Aquatic Center, there's a lot of smaller projects, uh, at various neighborhood parks, uh, trail improvements is always something that in need, needs to happen, and then, um, there's the possible joint-funded dog park on the county land, uh, off, um, Jake Way. And, um, as I reviewed those and went through things, uh, a lot of these other projects are more suited to another grants that's offered through Prop sixty-eight called the SPP Grant, it's a statewide park program grant, and so, uh, that one is a no-match grant, um, and that allows funding from two hundred thousand to around eight point five million, and they're in their round four right now, so I'm looking into, uh, what it would take to, uh, apply for those grant funds also for a lot of other projects. Um, so, getting back to the resolution, um, what, uh, I'm looking for is to get, um, your approval for the projects in the staff report, uh, to apply to the AB sixty-eight grant, uh, funding and authorizing that resolution, which is a requirement of the grant. Um, so you can have that option or, uh, not to approve and provide other, uh, facility suggestions for the funding, uh, so those are the, um, those are the options. And then also, on the, uh, second page of the staff report, uh, there's a cost estimate that I put together, uh, those are the numbers I'm gonna be going with for the grant right now, but you can see that, um, we've got about, uh, two hundred and thirteen thousand five ninety, five forty-two as the, as the estimated amount of funding that we have, and so, it looks like we, with some contingency, some healthy contingency, would still be able to pull the project off. Um, and so, um, I'm looking for input and, uh, hopefully, uh, an approval for this project, and I can take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Um, any questions or comments?
I think this sounds great.
I've done my own research since this came out and have confirmed that pickleball is indeed a...
It is.
Uh, yeah, and quite popular, so, you know, what do you know? You learn, you always learn something new. All right, well, with that, I will go ahead and open up public comments.
Public comment is open for item twelve point five, uh, AB sixty-eight grant funding projects. We'll start with, um, call in user three, you know who you are?
I may not.
You'll ask.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So, um, with the money being spent, my only question is, is there any way to make, if you do the pickleball section, to make it multiple-purpose area? Uh, there's still people that like to do whack-it-ball, volley, there's all kinds of other things, and the other question, too, is, can any of this grant money be spent on restroom facilities? Um, it's great that we can increase the court section with lighting and all of those facility improvements, but with that comes more people, more usage, and therefore, a demand on restroom facilities, which I know the city has actually destroyed one of them in one of the parks, so, that's just an honest question there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Rodman, go ahead.
Hi, Council. This sounds like a, a good use of these grant funds. I know our tennis courts really do need some love, and this would give it some flexibility as well, and I've recently heard that several people say, oh, we wish we had pickleball courts here, so, um, I'm with Mayor Saragosa in that, uh, I've now been told, but yeah, they are popular. Uh, I would suggest that our most popular park for future funding from, from Prop sixty-eight... Uh, I would suggest that our most popular park for future funding from, from Prop sixty-eight, that our most popular park, Gold Bug, have its maintenance and repair needs addressed too. And I would discourage the dog park idea. There is a dog park in Cameron Park that's open to all county residents and I have never seen anyone there. Every time I go to Cameron Park, no matter what time it is, there's never anybody in the dog park. So I would say unless you have a documented demand and you stated demonstrating high use in the one in Cameron Park, I don't see one, a need for one adjacent to Jake Way Road. I'd also recommend getting some input on the value and the risks of dog parks from our local veterinarians, who can see the results of people and the dogs going to the dog park. And those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Last call for item twelve point five. No further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. Uh, yeah, uh, Councilmember Acuna.
Terry, um, has the Recreation and Parks Commission reviewed this and made any recommendation?
Yes, that's something that I, uh, failed to put in my, uh, staff report. We met actually, uh, last Wednesday. We had a special meeting on October seventh. Um, and the, um, the idea and the staff report is virtually identical to, uh, what was presented to the Rec and Park Commission. We had a, uh, a five to zero, um, in favor of, um, recommending this, uh, to the council. And so apologize for missing on that. Uh, it was an important first step that we took, um, and we had some good discussion. And, uh, the commission is behind it a hundred percent.
Great, thank you.
I also would like to, uh, um, I had a couple other, uh, comments to, um, as, uh, answers to some questions on, uh, scope and any way to make it more flexible. It's tough with pickleball, as you know. We've had to keep the tennis courts locked up because we get a lot of skateboarding and other non, uh, preferred uses out there. And so the pickleball courts would also be under a key system. That's what we, we see. Uh, it has worked really well for the tennis courts and, uh, our community understands how it works. Also keeps that asset from being destroyed. Um, the other question about, um, like restrooms and things like that, it was, it was difficult to, uh, come to, um, a, a conclusion with trying to match the grant amount to a appropriate scope of a project. And I, I understand you could probably ask ten different people and then you would get ten different ideas of things that need to be improved, um, in our, uh, parks and our recreation facilities. Like I said before, I'm gonna continue looking at Prop sixty-eight and other grant opportunities for our trails. Our restrooms definitely need some work. Uh, we did do some upgrades of City Park Restrooms. They do have a timer gate on them now and we're working the bugs out of that. And we are planning on trying to redo the downtown restroom soon. Um, so there are a lot of projects that I'm looking at, um, trying to find some dollars for, to be creative for our town. And also, uh, the dog park that I had mentioned as a, as a partner project with the county, uh, the county has already, uh, awarded or, uh, approved fifty thousand dollars of their AB sixty-eight grant funding to go towards a dog park, which would cover most if not all the costs. Um, mostly what I would be doing is just assisting, uh, the county, uh, County Park, uh, Director in just working out some of the, some of the details on a staff level. Uh, we're not looking at dedicating any city funding for that. And that would remain a county facility, so just to clarify those.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay. I would like to, uh, uh, thank the commission or the committee, uh, commission or committee?
Commission.
Commission, Parks Commission for, you know, their efforts. One of the things we, we do task our, our different, various commissions on evaluating, determining the, the, um, diversity of all these, uh, projects that are brought forward and, and they put a lot of their own, uh, volunteer time into this. And, uh, you know, like most things when it comes to a committee's recommendations or a commission's recommendation, I like to, uh, find reasons, you know, look for reasons why I shouldn't do it because I think that they have put the time and effort into it. So I, I, and I appreciate their effort.
I wanna thank Terry and everyone involved in bringing this forward because, uh, it wasn't that many years ago that we were looking at tearing out the tennis courts because we simply didn't have the money to maintain them and bring them up to standards. And lighting, uh, again, a few years ago, was just a, just a dream edition out there that no one saw the way forward to getting that accomplished. Pickleball is absolutely the thing and, um, this is, this is a great combination. The fact that it'll be, uh, a lit facility, I think, is a huge improvement. And, um, appreciate the fact that we're gonna keep it locked. And maybe we could go to the twenty-first century and think about a keypad out there instead of the old-fashioned mastrolocks that were used for the tennis court. But, um, you know, the budget will go where it goes. So I think this is great that we've gone in a few years from sadly considering abandoning to doing a complete rehab and adding the additional courts. And that tot lot area, as I mentioned to, uh, Cleve, you go out to Lyons Park and that's a very nice area. You walk back there behind the lower field and you get out by the tot lot and that whole side, it just opens up. So to draw more people down there, um, is, is gonna be a real improvement. And, uh, I should probably also mention that Disc Golf has got a very solid following at that course. And if you ever wanna create an uproar, suggest making any modification that will affect the ability of the Disc Golfers to go out and do their thing. So they're huge Lyons Park supporters and they also do, uh, their fair share of volunteer tree trimming and grass cutting, uh, from, from what I understand from over the years. So, uh, there's a lot of things that are going on out there and I think this is, this is just wonderful. I was just shocked to see this. This is a great way, great agenda item to end on. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second it.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any other comments? Seeing none, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Suragosa.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Hi.
Councilmember Acuna.
Hi.
Councilmember Borelli.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before we proceed any further, given the hour, length of the meeting, uh, could I ask that maybe we consider, uh, taking item fourteen, which is future agenda items, and then, uh, after completion of that item, uh, adjourn the balance of the agenda.
Without objection?
I object. I'd like to at least, uh, report out on Transportation Commission.
Understood. We can, uh, so with, uh, we can forego the rest, uh, with, uh, maybe transportation?
Not major, a couple of things I was going to mention, uh, I think two of them I've already mentioned, but, uh, the only, do you want me to do that now or wait?
Uh, let's, let's go, um, so why don't we do this? Uh, let's go to-
I have no second on it, so I'll just, uh, withdraw my motion.
Well, we'll still cut it shorter though.
There, there really weren't, um-
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't, I didn't meet, I meet Thursday, so-
That you wanted to-
Yeah, just, just, let's just move forward. All right.
Item thirteen, um, uh, Transportation Commission.
Be brief.
All right, well, I, I will be brief. Uh, we, we went through the O W P, which is the overall work, uh, program, which pretty much lays out all the things for the year and it's the mid-year, um, uh, amendment. And so it's worth taking a look at. You get to see, it kind of, you get a, uh, an overview of the, where everything's going on in the whole county, it's on their website. One of the other things is, you know, it, you know, it's not in the city, but, uh, the highway to community, highway, the U.S. Highway Fifty Camino, Camino Safety Project, uh, was awarded and they have started construction on phase one. Uh, so you'll see barriers going up on Highway Fifty. And that's, that is coming up, actually it's just starting. So that is going to be-
What will phase one do? But I see the work going on up there.
It'll put a barrier and then, and it'll also put an undercrossing so that the traffic can get from side to side there in, uh, Carson Road.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And it'll alleviate some of the back-and-forth traffic. And putting the barrier up, you know, there's a lot of accidents with people doing U-turns and, and coming out of the Apple Cafe and all that's just gonna be, uh, a barrier going across there now, so.
And this is a project that's been gone, ongoing for fifteen years.
So that eliminate all the left-hand turns in that, in those three?
I believe so.
Pretty much. They may make room for emergency vehicles, but, uh, it's something they could drive through or over or something, but-
Right, but the others have, if they wanted, they have to be that specific.
Yeah, long overdue safety.
Yes, so that's, uh, uh, that's about all I have to report out, so.
Okay, any of the other, uh, committees have anything?
You know, um, we've eliminated this the last two meetings and I had, I had a fire safe council report, but I didn't bring it with me because it's so old. But, I mean, they're still working diligently and, um, addressing, you know, this is fire season and, and I think really just driving around and hearing some of the things that they talk about, that people are really trying and their home hardening, that, that's the main thing, is that home hardening, uh, you know, program and things that they recommend.
And Patty, what-
Yeah, no, they ran out of funding, I understand, but I heard it was being reinstated, so I don't know what-
And when does the, so if people wanted to maybe get involved, when does the Fire Safe Council?
The third, the third Thursday of the month. And of course, we're, everything's on Zoom now, so they can, they can look, um, on our program and see.
So in the evening?
Uh, at, um, five, five-thirty or six. I'm sorry.
No, that's, so third, third Thursday, five-thirty or six. Okay. Um, okay, uh, moving on to item fourteen, uh, request for future agenda items?
Um, I would like to request that we invite, uh, Housen Eldorado for a presentation. Possibly next council meeting if we can use it.
Or, um, yeah, I guess that makes sense. I was gonna say, or unless you wanted to marry it up with, um, Don Simone's, um-
It's up to you. That's on November tenth, so either way you wanna do it.
I don't know if it, maybe it makes sense to do it earlier.
You could give Housen Eldorado the option, yeah.
Okay, is everybody?
I think they're trying to get it in. They want to-
They're eager to get the word out, I think.
Especially the, well, winter's setting in and that's what their big goal, I think, yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, if we can get it in sooner, then that's, that should be fine.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, uh, city manager and/or staff reports?
Yeah, the only one I'm gonna, well, I'll go very quickly. A website update, we're making good progress. I think there's gonna be some great improvements with it. We had a presentation last Wednesday. Hopefully within the next two to three weeks, um, maybe by the November tenth meeting, maybe I can bring something out to you. We'll be almost ready to go, so, uh, we'll, we'll see how that goes. Um, our whole presentation, I already mentioned that, that'll be on November tenth. Last thing I just wanna mention quickly, we've seen emails going out, story on the news about potential PSPS, uh, starting tomorrow through Friday. Uh, the latest information we received through PG&E is that Placerville is not in that area and would not be, uh, de-energized, uh, any, either the Wednesday one or the Thursday, Friday one. There's actually two separate events. Uh, there are some areas in Eldorado County, but there's east of us, Borah Pollock and, uh, or actually Kybers, yeah, the Canyon Kybers. So, good news for us, it doesn't look like we will be affected by the-
That is great news.
So, quickly, let me know.
The only other thing I, I would mention, uh, is that no change in, uh, the county's, uh, level, so we're still in the orange level. I know there was some talk about maybe we would get moved back or even moved forward. I've heard both over the weekend.
It was on all the news stations-
Right, I don't know.
Saying Eldorado County is gonna go backwards, they're gonna fall backwards into red.
Which was odd because our numbers never had shown that big of a spike, um, you mean a little bit of increase, it, which has been everywhere for the most part. But we're still in orange, so fifty percent capacity for restaurants still. Uh, and, um, so with that, okay, um, I'm gonna go ahead and skip item sixteen, which are upcoming items. I think we went over most of those already anyways. Uh, so I will go ahead and adjourn, uh, tonight's meeting. Thank you, everybody.